Go.
Yeah, we are now streaming on this, by the way.
Can you hear Tim?
I just unmuted Tim.
Tim, can you hear us?
I need to get that right hand. Uh, columned so you can see when somebody's hands up. The participants.
So, lower middle of the window, if you put your mouse there, you'll see participants.
Yep.
Hey, Tim, you want to say a testing one, two, three?
Hello, fine people.
There we go. That's good. All right, y'all ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. It is seven oh nine P M. Let's bring our Charter Township and Union first virtual meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Cody, roll call, please.
Supervisor Gunning.
Here.
Treasurer Rice.
Here.
Trustee Milky.
Here.
Trustee Howke.
Here.
Trustee Lannan.
Here.
Westy Worley.
Here.
Clerk Cody, here.
Lisa, you're a little hard to understand on my end. If you could get a little closer to your device maybe. Um, I have a little welcome that I want to explain some of the protocol for tonight's evening or meeting. Good evening and welcome to the board's first virtual meeting. This is our first virtual meeting, so I ask and appreciate your patience as we become used to and more comfortable with the format. Because of certain logistical considerations, all actions to the board will be held via roll call vote. We will not be utilizing voice voting. As a reminder to my board colleagues, so that we don't speak over each other, please use the raise hand on the bottom right of the screen when you wish to speak and you'll be recognized. During the public comment portion of the meeting, if you wish to address the board, please raise, use the raise your hand icon, you'll be given, you'll be unmuted, asked to identify yourself, and be given three or five minutes to speak depending on which format, the first public speaking engagement, which or opportunity, which is a three minute, based upon items on the agenda and the five at the end, which is anything. Um, at the conclusion of that time, your microphone will be again muted. If you are assessing the meeting via telephone and would like to speak, please press star nine, and that'd be star nine on your phone. And again, this is going to be pretty strictly enforced on the three and the five, so try to keep your comments in either of those formats concise um, into that timeframe. All right, so with that out of the way, we go to item four on our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. So at this time, I would need to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support.
Motion and a support, motion how support Milky. Um, discussion.
Um, just help me with the uh, in terms of trying to to flag that you're going to be speaking, do we go to the participant thing? I, or do we, is there something else here that allows me to flag myself?
Hit the participant and then that screen will come up on the right-hand side that will show the participants and on the bottom right will be a raise hand icon.
Gotcha. The only, the one problem with that is that, you know, when you, when that goes up on the screen, it blocks out some of the members of the board, so you can't see them.
No, no, that's, that's just a little tiny blue hand that's going to be on the right-hand side, like right now Lisa Cody has her hand up.
If he has it in full screen.
I have it.
It'll be like a pop-up.
Ah, yeah, you need to go to um, the top right of the screen and then it's going to have gallery view. So if you take your finger or your mouse and wave over that direction, top right of the, you'll see gallery view.
There's, there's also a merge to meeting button on that form, Norm? Bottom right? Merge to meeting window?
Uh, on the bottom right.
Participant window? There's the mute me, raise hand, and merge to meeting window.
On bottom right?
Of the participant window.
Well, so there's a participant thing that I, if I click that. Oh, I see. Okay, I got it. Everything's fine. Perfect. Thank you.
You got the Brady Bunch thing going on right now with everybody a little small?
I got everyone little widow. They're all widow.
Okay.
My granddaughter. You little widow.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the approval of the agendas with this time, we would need to take that to vote. This will be a roll call. Clerk Cody.
Supervisor Gunning.
Yes.
Treasurer Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Milky.
Yes.
Trustee Howke.
Yes.
Trustee Lannan.
Yes.
Trustee Worley.
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
All right. Now, for me, what's going to be the most challenging part of the evening is going to be the public comment portion. So again, uh, using the raise your hand icon, please indicate if you'd like to speak, your microphone would be activated and I ask you identify yourself. Please limit your remarks to three or five minutes. This will be a three-minute opportunity at the beginning, and this would be on items on the agenda and they will be questions only with no responses from board members. At the conclusion of that time, your microphone will again be muted. If you are assessing the meeting via telephone only, would like to speak, please press star nine. So at this time, we open public comments. Items on this agenda and we go to Mr. Zalit.
All right, hold on here. I'm asking Jim to start his video and I'm trying to unmute him.
Hey, we see you, Jim.
Right. How about now?
There you go.
There we go. All right. A lot of buttons there you gotta press, so um.
Let me uh. Yep, thank you for allowing me to participate in this. I was unable to make the last meeting uh, due to being out of town. I'd like to voice my concerns about the proposed second reading of the proposed tonight. Uh, it's, the format is pretty limited. Uh, in a response from the township attorney, uh, we were advised that we had three minutes to speak at the board and the board um, agenda uh, states that I need to write, ask any questions to the township, uh, which I sent a letter on the twenty-third and have yet not gotten any response, so. Uh, my concerns are basically twofold. Uh, ones are with the ordinance itself and there's not enough time to go over all the uh, problems with the ordinance itself. Uh, but uh, some of the high points are, my major concerns are that it treats every excavation project in the township, whether you're digging a pond or building a driveway, like a very large gravel commercial pit. One of the things that uh, and is, that is in there and is not very clear, but it appears that if you're going to place any amount of fill on your property, you are going to be required by the planning commission to approve that. Um, the ordinance, again, is very broad and very vague. Uh, there's not even a mention where uh, I know the intent is to keep me from opening my sand pit, but uh, the ordinance doesn't even speak to it being a commercial operation. Um, so, uh, those are just the highlights of the problems with the ordinance itself, other than being uh, again, very difficult to administer. Uh, one minor point is that uh, that calls for township inspectors, inspections, uh, which is in conflict with the mining and health safety federal law because it's a federally regulated site. Uh, there, you know, you need to be minor trained, minor safety trained in order to enter a federal site, uh, so that's not in the ordinance. Uh, but just again, too many to, too many problems to list tonight. Uh, the other problems I have is the fact that we're going to create a police ordinance and it looks like it's just to be able to, uh, if I were able to succeed in litigation on the moratorium, that I'd still uh, be subject to the new mining restrictions. Uh, again, uh, if we're going to apply this to all sites that have had mined sand and gravel in the past, uh, A, it'd be nice to know what those sites are. Uh, it was mentioned in the last board packet that there's one or two sites and uh, there are many, many, many more, and I can give you a couple off the top of my head. Gruy Lakes, which is the two big large lakes north of the water park there. Uh, that was an old mining site. There are four uh, property or four lakes what left over from the Hubshire and Otterback Mine over there east of Isabella and north of Millbrook. Uh, many, many golf uh, ponds built on.
You're, you're three minutes.
All right, um, uh, then the ordinance can't be evenly enforced, uh, and I'll uh, would like to see the board table it tonight and do some work. It needs a lot more work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Next, we have um, the phone number ending in seven one three.
All right, let me find that person.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, this is Joe Quant and uh, as you know, I represent the Burke Sand and Gravel Fisher Companies, as well as uh, several other prominent businesses and landowners in Union Township. Uh, my clients are all concerned that they're, uh, number one, there isn't an opportunity for a public hearing, uh, at least a meaningful public hearing, uh, that involves all the stakeholders, including my clients who were uh, not specifically informed about the extraction ordinance, uh, before it was well underway uh, to approval and after a first meeting. Uh, the ordinance appears to be, quite frankly, a canned ordinance that's drafted by a group who's obviously politically or philosophically uh, motivated to stop all sand and gravel operations, uh, essentially with a very broad brush. Uh, the ordinance is as drafted is illegal, uh, and I can certainly guarantee you that it will be challenged in court if it's adopted as it is. Uh, the, uh, the reasons the ordinance is illegal are referenced in a letter dated March twenty-third and is already part of your uh, administrative record. Uh, certainly, the ordinance goes well beyond what is necessary to protect the townships and, and residents' interests. Uh, the ordinance will essentially make sand and gravel extraction uh, activities impossible within the township or frankly, so grossly cost prohibitive that it will be impossible. Um, and that type of activity, as you uh, probably already know, or maybe you don't know, uh, is considered a taking under Michigan law and, and even if, uh, and even if the litigation was unsuccessful, uh, you know, as far as the ordinance itself, at the best case scenario for the township from a legal perspective is that uh, they would be, uh, the township would still be responsibility for takings damages, uh, certainly in the tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. Uh, considering the extraordinary uh, financial consequences both to the township and those people affected by the ordinance, it would seem to make sense uh, to work with the affected parties to try to find a collaborative solution. Uh, after all this process was engaged and moved forward really without any real opportunity for a lot of the people who are most dramatically affected by it, uh, to participate in the public process. Uh, certainly seems to be a lack of transparency that was involved. Uh, and we would also respectfully ask that the township table final approval and schedule a meeting uh, with representation of the township, the affected stakeholders, including, you know, other uh, property owners. Uh, certainly, we want to have a broader uh, universe of people have the opportunity to participate in the process. Because of the extraordinary consequences to everyone, uh, including the taxpayers of the township, uh, and all the affected community, we would ask that the township uh, delay further action on the ordinance's approval, pending further study and community engagement. Uh, again, uh, like the other gentleman, I, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this evening and the accommodations that you've made electronically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quant.
Thank you.
And at this time, do we have anyone else um, that is viewing that would like to speak during our first public comment section? I'm seeing no hands raised. I'll go a little bit longer here. All right, seeing no one else present for public comment, we will close public comment at this point in time and move on to item eight in our agenda, which is going to be reports and board comments. Um, we're going to go from A, which is the current list of boards and commissions, appointments are needed. Um, I uh, don't feel comfortable at this point in time in our format, um, nominating anyone for an opening until we get more comfortable with our surroundings. Um, so I, at this point in time, don't have a nomination for our open planning commission slot. Um, so we would move to the monthly report from the township manager, which we've already read. Um, and so we go to the planning commission and Z B A updates.
Thank you. The uh, just a quick update, the zoning board of appeals had a meeting in March. Uh, they did not have any applications, but they did have a training session that, that we facilitated. Uh, looking at decision-making conflicts of interest and, and other uh, details of, of the activity of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, they did not have a meeting in April. We didn't have any applications of either for the, for the May meeting at this point. Uh, so uh, the planning commission had a meeting scheduled in March, but the, the virus outbreak um, caused them to decide to, to cancel that. Uh, so at this point, we are planning to hold a meeting electronically uh, in April, uh, where they will be essentially uh, taking care of the items that were on the March agenda. Uh, that's, that's where things stand at this point. The, the updates, uh, the, the updated draft zoning ordinance is in the planning commission's hands. Um, they are reviewing it. I've, I've had a, a few people can uh, reach out to me with, with questions, uh, but the intent is that that, that, that zone, that draft zoning ordinance review will uh, also begin formally with their April meeting.
All right. Thank you, Rodney. Any questions for Rodney at this point? All right, thank you, Rodney. So we move from planning commission and Z B A updates over to item D, board member reports. Let's start with um, Treasurer Rice and the sidewalk committee.
Okay, um, well, we did not have an additional meeting since um, our last, our last board meeting and the update I gave then. Um, we do, however, in the board packet have um, a letter that we have written to the township board. Um, and just kind of touching on some of our goals and that, that we, we would like to see done um, in that, that we think are achievable for twenty twenty. Um, and that is, the first is implement sidewalks located on twenty-ten South Lincoln Road, so out in front of the office. Um, the second is, and these are not in any particular order, but the second one, finish implementing sidewalks on the north side of Bluegrass Road between Isabella and Mission Road. Um, and the third thing is to complete and construct sidewalks for waivers revoked in two thousand eighteen in the year twenty twenty. So those are kind of the three big things that we think are achievable goals for the board for twenty twenty.
How many sidewalks, Kim, were um, in that uh, were given the was the, the two thousand eighteen, yeah, the waivers?
I don't have that number in front of me. Um, I don't know if maybe Rodney knows if he's able to chime in, but I, I don't have that number in front of me, to be honest.
I recall, I believe that there were seven waivers granted. One of the sidewalks has been installed already and the others, uh, we've communicated with with each of the uh, the property owners involved and, and they, they're aware of the requirements.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy.
All right, any questions for trustee or treasurer Rice? All right, seeing none. Um, we move, I'm going to move as I'm seeing to the next person, which would be Tim Lannan. Tim?
Yes, uh, actually, I just raised my hand to respond to Kim's report, but that was.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And, and no big deal, I'll get into it here, but uh, I have no boards uh, to report on at this point in time, but uh, Kim, I was actually going to ask to remove from the consent agenda, item number one, which you just spoke to. And was very pleased to see the uh, recommendations set forth uh, in the letter for, from uh, the sidewalk and pathways prioritization committee and um, uh, especially happy to see that uh, you guys believe that work on the north side of Bluegrass between Isabella and Mission could be accomplished this year, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions at all? I'm looking for the hand icons this time instead of just your looks. All right, all right, so we'd move up to uh, Norm.
So as you know, on the thirty-first of March, um, Mark had submitted applications for the two percent um, grants, um, Bud Segano Chippewa Tribe, and just to reiterate, there are four grants total. Um, first one is for the safety lights and signage on Isabella Road uh, by Mary McGreyer's school. The second one would be the intersection of Broadway and Isabella to provide uh, traffic lights and left turn signal, left turn lane. Uh, third would be the upgrade and improvements of the Jameson Park um, building and park uh, per the um, the master plan, the Jameson Park master plan. And the fourth, which was added at your last meeting, uh, was, is for the uh, Chippewa River Walkway, uh, for the master plan, which will coincide with the river um, trail group. And that includes Mount Pleasant, uh, Union Township, uh, Segano, Segano Chippewa Tribe, C M U, Middletown County. Um, the total of those four requests that we're asking for comes to uh, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we're asking for in terms of the grants. So um, I will, um, it's all been submitted, probably next month when we hear. Um, but I will be active in, in, in speaking with tribal members and that we are the request.
All right. Any questions for trustee Worley? All right, thank you. And we move on to uh, the next person, which is, and you guys don't know who I'm going to call next, which is kind of cool. Uh, Brian Milky.
I have nothing to report today. I'm glad we're able to be here. Thank you.
All right. Bill?
I have nothing to report. There have been no road commission meetings.
All right, and clerk Cody?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right, um, we just have uh, finished our border review up uh, in um, latter part of, of March is I gotta, you know, give a big pat on the back to uh, and applaud the efforts of our three border review members. Um, that would be Brian Nyer, Doug LaBelle, and uh, James Thering. Um, you know, they, we were doing this whole thing when, when all the COVID uh, stuff was coming down, so. Um, you know, i- it, it was a little hairy and it was a matter of getting, you know, everybody comfortable with what was going on and, and having people call in instead of coming through the door and we still had people coming in the door because we had to. Um, so I, I, I applaud their efforts and um, you know, they really went above and beyond for the township. Um, and uh, that's all I have for board member report. And so if anyone, if anyone has any questions at all, we'll move to consent agenda. All right, so we're at item nine, consent agenda. We need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, so motion how clerk uh, Cody with the second. Um, we had who checking the warrants?
I did. Everything looked okay.
All right, so at this time, we would take this to vote. This would be to approve the consent agenda. Yep, yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, real quick question, if, if we just take this in order and I don't have to pull anything out, I have a quick question for um, Kim?
Okay.
Um, actually, sorry, our uh, public service um, utilities, sorry. Um, with regards to the sanitary, sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation, um, you know, I read in the report that the, the group that's, you're suggesting be awarded this contract has done exemplary work. Um, but I'm just surprised we never get, or I shouldn't say never, the last couple, we haven't gotten more than one bid. Is there a reason for that? Just so I can understand that?
I'm not sure what the reason is, other than um, they're, they're one of the closest contractors that does this type of work that does this particular application with the resin coating on the manholes in our area. They're actually out of um, the Grand Rapids area. A lot of the other ones are further downstate. So it might be a question of traveling. We have had some other contractors in the past, but the last two plumbers has been the only um, bidders on the job.
Let's hope.
The timing may be part of, I'm sorry, I stepped on.
Let's hope they don't go away.
We had, um, we had a few others that called about the job and we also had one other one that came and looked at it and it may be that the timing was when we took the bids. The bids were, we had already put it out on the street before this happened with the, the virus, so that might have deterred some of them from actually submitting a bid, although we did hold a bid opening.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so any more questions at all? All right, so this would be a motion, I believe it was, what uh, was it? How can Cody on this one?
Yes.
This would be to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Roll call, ready?
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly. And so this is going to be a roll call vote, and so clerk Cody.
Supervisor Gunning.
Yes.
Treasurer Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Milky.
Yes.
Trustee Howke.
Yes.
Trustee Lannan.
Yes.
Trustee Worley.
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
All right, consent agenda is approved. We move to our first new business item. This will be item ten on the agenda. This would be a discussion action item and this is consideration to prove the four contracts with Isabella County Road Commission for the rehabilitation of four miles of gravel roads. Mark, would you like to lead us in on that?
Thank you and good evening, everybody. This is the annual gravel road contract. We have uh, we're looking for consideration for four mi, approval of four contracts with the road commission for four miles of road, fifty-four thousand dollars. The road commission is recommending for two miles worth of road that British Road from Deerfield to Wing Road is one that needs it. Lincoln Road from Deerfield to Millbrook and then Craig Hill Road from River to Mission. Those three combined are, are two miles. The those miles for the town, for, for the uh, program with road commission are split fifty-fifty between the township and the road commission. And then the other two miles, which would be paid a hundred percent by the township, still need to be decided. And I know that prior to the second meeting in March, which ended up being canceled, there was um, we were talking about which is, which two roads we ought to do. And I think uh, trustee Howke had some recommendations in that area, uh, but so I'm, need to kind of turn it back over to the board. If you're, if you're wanting to move on this, the board needs to decide on two miles of road for additional gravel rehab, assuming you're. assuming you're accepting the road commission's recommendation for there too.
All right, so this item would be a little unusual from the standpoint that we can't make a motion to approve because we don't have really the full motion yet. So we would have to open this up to discussion first, I would probably open with Bill Howke on this, Bill?
Yeah, I, well, first of all, I made a motion to approve the two miles that the road commission approved, or wants us to do, and then I sent an email out. One mile of Millbrook Road from Isabella Road to Somerton Road, a quarter of a mile of Meadowlark, that's the road Lisa lives on, a quarter of a mile of River Road east of Isabella to the dead end that's across from Delfield, and then a quarter of a mile of Airway Drive south of Airport Road, Maranatha Baptist Church is right there on the corner, and then Totally Sports. And that pretty much covers all of our gravel roads unless Kim Smith can think of any other ones. So that would be three and three quarters of miles. Mark and I had talked. Craig Hill Road is pretty bad, so maybe we could have them put some extra gravel, especially up by the cemetery up there, Memorial Gardens, it's pretty bad right up there, and maybe the road commission would do a little extra work on that quarter of a mile. So that's what my proposal would be.
Bill, I have just a quick question, and then I'll get with Tim and then Norm right after this question, if you don't mind. So we have recommendations on Millbrook, and we have recommendations on Meridian, since those are shared expense with two separate townships, Deerfield, and I'm thinking, is it Lincoln?
They're not a shared expense.
They're, they're not, even though that that's a shared road.
Well, I don't know about that, maybe Kim Smith would know, as far as that quarter of a mile of, or that half mile of Meridian Road that you would share with Deerfield Township, but as far as Millbrook Road goes, we're responsible for Millbrook Road.
That's my understanding as well, Bill, if they approve it tonight.
Oh, really? So even though that's a bordering on an opposite, another township to the south, then we're still one hundred percent on that one?
We've done three miles of that so far.
I'm under the impression that for the gravel roads, we're in it on our own, paved road, then I believe it's a shared entity.
It's a shared, okay, all right.
Believe that that's how it works, maybe don't, but I believe that's the, the way it's.
Okay. I, I just in the back of my mind, it seemed like we, we split the, the Millbrook. Okay.
No.
All right, so I'll move to Tim Lannan.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. What I recall about the boundary roads is, actually, if maybe it's the, your southern boundary road or western boundary road, you're responsible for the hundred percent of it.
I know it was the southern.
But there, so there is something there, but just clear, I'm looking for a little clarification. Market indicated the share is a fifty-fifty split between the township and the county. Maybe I'm reading this not quite correctly, but I, I see it says that aggregate cost share is seventy-five percent township and twenty-five percent county road commission.
Trustee Lannan, the over the course of the four miles, the split ends up being seventy-five, twenty-five.
Okay.
And the way the road commission kinda looks at it is two of the miles are shared fifty-fifty, the other two are one hundred percent township, so when you look at it for all four miles, the split ends up being seventy-five, twenty-five.
Okay, I, I understand that, but it's somewhat deceiving writing it that way, it's a little different.
Yeah, I noticed it too, seventy-five, twenty-five could have threw me off at first, too.
Uh, thank you for your comments, Mark.
Norm?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Bill for doing all the work on this, and I certainly support the, the projects that you're recommending, Bill. I think they're all suitable. With the quarter mile we have left, you know, I think with Craig Hill, that area, maybe there's more, even in Meadowlark, because that's pretty well worn down as well, so maybe they can make that determination as to where it would be best utilized, but we still have that quarter to dispense, and, but I would think Craig Hill and Meadowlark would be too, that I would be considering, because I think both, both of those are in the worst condition.
All right, Lisa?
If there is a motion made to approve this with my road involved in it, I may actually recuse myself from voting on it.
Well, do you feel like you have a conflict? I mean, it's, a lot of it's based upon, if you feel like there's a conflict, then we would have to obviously vote on that.
It's to the, it's the board that decides, I don't. It's the road I live on, it, you know.
Understood.
It's gonna benefit your whole neighborhood.
So I think it would.
All right, so clerk Cody, at this point, you would like to abstain, remove yourself from the conversation?
Yeah.
And vote, all right, so clerk Cody would like to remove herself or accuse herself from the vote and the conversation? Trustee Howke?
Yes, just one quick thing, also on Lincoln Road between Deerfield and Millbrook Road, we've heard many discussions how bad that road is. One of the reasons is, is there's no ditches along it, I think everybody saw my email, and in the future, maybe we should look at that where ditches are being filled in and there's nowhere for the water to run. I did talk to Jim Poehl at the road commission to see about greater ditching that road, so there is a place for water to run, and they would only be able to do the, the west side of Lincoln Road. On the east side, there's a pipeline running down through it, so they'd have to check on that before they did that, but that would give water somewhere to run, so hopefully the road won't be as bad in the future, and he said they wouldn't be able to do something like that until this fall. They have to notify the farmer that's farming that along there.
Yeah, we had talked about that before, Bill, and, and I'm, I'm pretty positive it's Gilmore Township that has an ordinance on that very subject. And so maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to maybe take a look at that particular ordinance and see if something that we would want to implement, because it is frustrating spending the money that we do on these roads and then have it all ruined by, by a farmer taking the ditch out, so much as we love farmers, I, I understand that, but you know, it's, we, the residents are paying for the road, and it'd be nice to have somewhere for the water to go. All right, so let's see, do we have a full motion on this? Actually, I've got one more person, the treasurer Rice.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to mention that I believe Bill had actually already made a motion in that, so we probably need to have a second and, you know, follow procedure, so.
Yeah, yeah, Bill, so what you have to do is you'd have to amend your motion.
Including everything.
I made a motion to approve the roads that the road commission said to do, and then, and then an additional I don't know what to say, we'll put an addition on that of one mile of Millbrook Road from Isabella to Somerton, a quarter of a mile of Meadowlark, a quarter of a mile of River Road east of Isabella to the dead end, and then a quarter of a mile of Airway Drive south of Airport Road to the dead end.
All right, so I need to have a second on that.
And support.
Okay, motion support. All right, and then, so this would be to approve the recommendations of the road commission of Meridian Road, Deerfield Road to Wing Road, Lincoln Road, Deerfield Road to Millbrook, Craig Hill Road, River Road to Mission Road, one mile of Millbrook from Isabella to Somerton, Meadowlark Drive, and then Airway Drive, correct, Bill?
Yes, there's a couple of hands raised.
All right, and then do we want to also, do we want to add into this motion the extra?
Yes.
On Craig Hill?
Yes, that's something that Kim Smith could probably talk to the road commission about.
Okay, do we want to add that into the motion? Or just leave that up to us to come back again? Kim, you could probably address that with the road commission, come back to us at the next meeting, and we could approve it at that point in time.
Well, if you approved it tonight, then we could, I could ask them to prepare the agreement. It would be at the same cost as the other gravel roads would be, so then it would be done, because they like to have those back by the end of April, or, yeah, the end of April. So then that, we would be done with that, and they would be able to proceed and order what they need to for the gravel roads.
Okay, so Bill, I hate to do this to you again, you need to amend the motion.
I'll amend the motion to put extra gravel on Craig Hill Road.
All right, all right, so we do have a motion from trustee Howke, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So it's motion, motion Howke, second Worley, this is gonna be a roll call, clerk Cody is not able, yes, Tim?
Okay, if I was understanding correctly, this will be a contract that has slightly less than four miles of gravel roadwork in linear numbers, is that correct? A little bit less than four mile. Okay.
Three and three quarter miles.
So I personally would like to see something to the effect not to exceed the fifty-four thousand dollar level, because it's kind of vague right now with the adding of gravel, not, you know, that's a it, it's unclear. So I would just suggest that limit that value, that dollar limit, fifty-four thousand be a max.
I'll amend my motion with a fifty-four thousand dollar maximum. Report.
Okay, so again, amended motion from Howke Worley with the second, and to repeat this motion is the approval of four contracts with the Isabella County Road Commission for the rehabilitation of four miles of gravel roads, Meridian Road, Deerfield Road to Wing Road, Lincoln Road, Deerfield Road to Millbrook, Craig Hill Road, River Road to Mission Road with extra gravel added on that to suffice or improve the conditions. Millbrook Road, one mile from Isabella to Somerton, Meadowlark and Airway, none of this to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars. Right? Did I get it? All right.
Good job, Ben.
Hopefully it gets easier after this. All right, so with clerk Cody, can she, or you're out of the mix here, so we'd need to have the roll call, I can, what's that?
I can still say your name.
You can still do it, okay, all right.
So supervisor Gunning.
Yes.
Treasurer Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Milky.
Yes.
Trustee Howke.
Yes.
Trustee Lannan.
Yes.
Trustee Worley.
Yes.
So motion approved. Um, now we add and move to item B, which is again a discussion action item. This would be the second reading and adoption of the proposed extraction ordinance and a need for morning sun publication, Mark, do you want to lead this?
Thank you, and this paperwork begins on page forty-six of your agenda packet. At, and just a little background, start with a little background, at the January ninth board meeting, the trustee, the board of trustees placed a temporary moratorium on extraction operations in order to allow staff time to study and potentially update existing regulations regarding these operations. We did that, and then at the first meeting in March, the March eleventh board meeting, the board approved the first reading of the ordinance and publication. That notice and summary occurred in the paper on March seventeenth. This proposed ordinance establishes some standards and permit approval procedures. The second reading and adoption recommendation was originally at your second meeting in March, that meeting was subsequently canceled. So it is before you, before you tonight. At, at the first reading, we had Mr. Nanny come up and speak to this, provide some background, I'm gonna ask that he come up again and you know, kind of recap the ordinance itself, and in particular, cover some of the things that it is meant to be dealing with and what it is not dealing with, so Mr. Nanny, if, if you could, please.
Thank you, so the, the ordinance we have, you have before you is, is a general police powers ordinance, it's, the, the proposal is to move extraction operations out of the zoning ordinance to eliminate the need for a special use permit approval and exte, and instead create this extraction permit process, subject to, to the standards that are in this, in this proposed document. One of the key elements I'd like to focus on is actually section three, which is entitled Authority and Scope. It, it, there's been some comments about, earlier about, about what this ordinance is intended to cover. The, the, the authority scope section specifically says the township has authority to regulate extraction operations. And that is a defined term in the ordinance. It also says that, that the township can regulate the associated reclamation activities, that's basically restoring the land after the extraction is complete, and also any importation of fill, and this is related to protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. As I said, this is, this ordinance regulates extraction operations, specifically in section twenty-three, in the back, towards the back of the ordinance, has the definition of extraction ord, operation, and it's, it's fairly, fairly long, I just wanted to read a quick piece of it, it says extraction, extraction operations, extraction from the earth of mineral aggregates or, or non-metallic minerals for sale or for use by the applicant owner-operator. It includes the use of mining equipment or techniques to remove materials from the in-place non-metallic mineral deposit, as well as associated activities such as excavation, grading, and dredging. This is, this ordinance is, is very specific in its scope, it, it does not, and is, is not intended to regulate digging of a, of a pond for, for recreation or for agriculture, or for, for any, any purpose related to that you might want to create a small pond or dig, dig out a, a pool or, or foundation for a home. It, there, there are some specific exemptions that are, that are listed in the ordinance. But beyond that, this, the fact that the, the scope specifically states that this regulates the extraction operations, and that that term is very specifically defined to be in the character of, of a facility that is mining sand and gravel essentially for use off-site, either for sale or for, for use off-site. Within, within the scope, it means that it, it's limited, we're not, we're not with this ordinance getting into regulating private activity of a homeowner or private activity related, quite frankly, even to a development project. If we have a land development project where, that would involve regrading of a site or, or excavation of an area for, for for stormwater management, all of that would be handled through the zoning ordinance as it is right now, those, those. Those, those activities are not governed at all by this proposed ordinance. The, uh, uh, in, in the, in the paperwork that you have before you, we, we did note, uh, we did, did review the avail, available information on, on existing extraction operations in, uh, Isabelle County. Uh, you have noted there that there are thirteen sites. There are seven, uh, extraction operators in the county. Uh, none of those active sites are, are anywhere close to Union Township. We do not have any active extraction operations in the township right now. The only, the only, uh, case we have that, that is headed that way is Mr. Zalid's application that, that, uh, uh, is currently on hold with this moratorium. So with that, with that in mind, uh, there, there, as I noted in, we noted in the paperwork, there were, uh, a couple of sites that had some extraction-related activity in the past. Uh, these are not currently active. It's simply noted that there was some extraction activity. By that, I mean that the, it's clear that there was some material removed in the past. Uh, here, we're not talking about a site that is, uh, like, for example, uh, the example that, that, you know, that's been cited is central concrete and central asphalt. Um, that's a, a former uh, extraction operation site that has been completely finished. Uh, there is no activity there uh, whatsoever. Uh, that is a site that essentially now operates as an industrial and office for, for central concrete. Uh, their quit in the storage yard and, and other facilities. It is also not governed in any way by this extraction ordinance. There is, there's nothing in this ordinance that would require any further reclamation of a site that has been completely closed. Uh, that, that this ordinance only applies to, uh, those operations, I, that, only to current operators essentially that, that would like to to, to conduct extraction operations in the township, uh, today. The, uh, just a couple of items that, that have come up, and I thought I, I would address them. There was a question that came up about what the escrow deposit language is in, in section six, which is, which governs the application procedure for an extraction permit. There's some language that talks about a fee, uh, just as we normally require for a site plan review or subdivision plat. But there's also language that states that the township may require an escrow deposit. And, and what this is, I think, uh, one of our public, uh, comments discuss the fact that, that, uh, that, that you, you have to have certain expertise in order to inspect a, an extraction site, but typically where the township, uh, townships have, uh, an ordinance of this, of this type, there's a, uh, typically experts are hired to to do those inspections, uh, often a civil engineer, for example, to check to make sure the slope has been, of the land has been done correctly, uh, to make sure that, that, uh, the amount of, of, of material that's been removed is consistent with what, what the, the mining plan. Those elements are typically handled through a, uh, review by an expert, a civil engineer or similar, uh, expertise. Uh, so the escrow deposit is intended in part to be able to for the township to be able to recover its costs related to having that expert available. Uh, to handle those inspections and also to review any, any plans that come in, uh, related engineering details. Uh, the other side of that, the other question that came up, uh, and these were sort of tied together, was related to uh, the reclamation bond. Reclamation of a site, this is again, this is where, uh, when the extraction operation is, is, is done in a certain area, uh, the idea is that there's, the land is reclaimed and essentially put back into a condition where it can be used for some post-extraction operation use, whether that be agriculture or development for houses or, or some other purpose. Uh, so uh, reclamation is one of the key reasons to have an extraction ordinance. If we don't have an ordinance with, with, uh, uh, strong support for ensuring that reclamation is done correctly, we can run into a situation where when the, the, the money is, when the extraction is finished, essentially when the operator has no more uh, income from his property and it simply gets abandoned, uh, then the township is essentially on the hook to, or a future property owner is on the hook to, to try to get that cleaned up. Or we have to deal with the fact that it's not cleaned up and we have a, have an eyesore uh, in the community. So the reclamation bond requirement is specifically new in the proposed ordinance to ensure that, that if in the worst-case scenario, the, uh, the extraction operator abandons the site, either through bankruptcy or other, other means, uh, that the township has the resources to step in and take care of making the site safe and, and, uh, and restoring the site that it could be used for, for, uh, a, a different use in the future. The numbers seem high, uh, we have a number in there, so it suggests a minimum of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I can tell you from experience, working with the extraction operations, and unfortunately, in one case, an operation that went bankrupt, uh, where it was, it was poorly managed for a significant period of time and eventually went under. Uh, the community that, that I worked for at the time had a, a bond requirement of a quarter of a million dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand. And that bond, uh, ultimately, when the township was able to get a hold of it, and after taking out legal costs, uh, there's about thirty thousand legal costs to get a hold of that bond. Uh, the, the end result was that it only allowed, uh, ultimately the reclamation of about twenty percent of the site, and it was not a large operation. Uh, so they had to focus on taking care of only the, the most important, uh, and most dangerous areas that needed to be fixed. So that, although the number seems large, it, it, if the township has to take care of this, this reclamation, it is going to have a significant cost associated with it. The, the bond itself is something, we're not looking, it's not intended, although it could be a cash bond. The idea is typically it's a letter of credit. Or, uh, or as an alternative, it is a, a bond issued by a bonding agent, uh, that, uh, they, where a small amount of money, relatively small amount of money is provided to secure a bond, uh, as a guarantee. So these are, the, this is a worst-case scenario moment, but it's all about protecting the township, protecting the neighboring property owners. And that's, that's really the focus of the ordinance overall. This is, the ordinance is intended to modernize our, unfortunately, our outdated regulations. They date back at al- almost forty years uh, without significant change. Uh, and they, they don't reflect current practices. They don't reflect current uh, options that the township should have available to to protect, uh, neighboring property owners, as well as ensure that, uh, the, the site is able to be used in the future, uh, after, after extraction is done. And it is, it is also intended absolutely to help ensure that Mr. Zalid, in particular, our current applicant for a special use permit, is able to proceed forward and, and secure an extraction permit. This, uh, the ordinance right, right from the top, it says it, it recognizes that sand and gravel uh, is an important resource, is a resource that does need to be uh, mined fairly locally. It's not something that, that's cost-effective to transport long distances. And it is essential to our, our building process, both for roads uh, and for, for, uh, land development and building construction. So there's no intent in this ordinance to, to prevent anyone from from, uh, you know, from securing an extraction permit. And on the, it's actually the opposite. It's intended to create circumstance where that can be done in an expedition as, as manner as possible, while still protecting the township, uh, the residents and, and the environment uh, around it. The, uh, as I said, this is not about, about prohibiting anybody from, uh, it's not about, uh, regulating the activities that, that are currently handled through building permits, zoning permits, site plan review. It is about specifically addressing the, the, the needs of, of the township and also the needs of extraction operators uh, to provide and, and, uh, in mind this, this particular non, uh, mineral resource. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Um, I have an issue or, or a question on the definition of extraction operation. I, I understand the, the first segment of it until it gets into the also. Um, and that's where I start getting a little confused, and I'll read it. Um, also, it includes processes carried out at a non-metallic mining site that are related to preparation or processing of the mineral aggregates or non-metallic items obtained from the non-metallic mining site. Such as, but not limited to stockpiling of materials blending mineral aggregates or non-metallic minerals, grading, crushing, screening and scalping. It does not include removal from the earth of products or commodities that contain only minor incidental amounts of non-metallic milli- minerals, such as commercial sodic agricultural crops or ornamental or garden plants, forest products, Christmas trees or plant nursery stock. And I guess where I'm confused is that when we start talking about off-site, obtained from the non-metallic mining site. So if Mr. Zalid were, um, delivering a load of gravel to, um, central concrete, and they were using that as an aggregate mix that they were going to screen and create concrete. So where does how do they not become involved in this when they're bringing in items from the non-metallic mining site?
I, I, uh, just want to clarify, this isn't, this is not about an off-site operation, you know, central, central concrete is, is a good example. They are simply receiving product that they then make use to, to, uh, to mix concrete or, or mix asphalt, uh, or, or to have for, for, uh, the other, other purposes that, with their operation. They're simply receiving that product. What this, this list that comes up after the word also is talking about essentially the ancillary activities, uh, beyond simply, uh, mining the material out of the ground. Um, the extraction operations typically are, are sorting that material, creating different products, you know, as, uh, we are aware, the road commission uses a certain grade of gravel, uh, that's basically a certain size and character uh, for, for their roads. Uh, the construction industry uses a different type of material, different grade of, of gravel or different, different, uh, character of sand or, or mixture, uh, for, for various types of construction. And so the extraction operation part of it is actually sorting this material. Because of course it comes out of the ground completely unsorted. Uh, and so that's, that's where we're getting into these, these comments about stockpiling, blending, uh, grading, crushing, screening and scalping. This is, this is all about sorting the material and creating different products, which will then be hauled off-site to, uh, to satisfy particular orders. Uh, is, it, all these activities are taking place on the extraction operation site.
All right, perhaps the wording is just kind of confusing on, on that second half, maybe needs to be clarified, um, because I'm not the only person that, that came up with that conclusion. Okay, um, who else has a question? Would you raise your hand? Bill Howe?
Yes, um, I know Jim Zalid had sent a list of questions in. Were those questions ever answered? I know he he emailed them, or did he send a letter? I can't remember. Uh, we've got such a long packet on this. I know he had a list of questions. I thought he emailed them, and I wondered if those questions were answered.
This is Mark, and maybe I can respond to that?
Yeah, that's what I was hoping, Mark. I guess I should have asked you that question.
We, we did receive a, a list of questions from Mr. Zalid. The same day we see, we received a similar, a, a list of similar questions from Mr. Zalid's attorney. And so I thought it was prudent to let our attorney respond, because I'm not, you know, I'm not in the business of responding directly to the attorney.
Sure.
And you know, we did have that discussion internally, um, you know, have I, I, in fact, I responded to Mr. Zalid that I'd be preparing responses for him. And then just later that day, uh, questioned a letter from the attorney, similar set of questions, and I didn't want to get in a position because I don't know, you know, what any any applicant or any individual may do, or their attorney may do. And so I need to be very careful about that response, how it was made. So we thought it best to have one response to both parties coming from our attorney. And that response, I believe, is in process. And we discussed when to send that. And we thought after tonight's meeting, because there might be information in tonight's meeting, that would be, uh, be valuable or add, add value to the response.
All right. Uh, Eric?
Yeah, I don't know if, uh, just because it kind of touched on that, um, that, I guess I, I put my hand up before Mark completed his, his thoughts. That pretty much summarized it. Uh, with regard to the response, we're happy to make a response, um, and, uh, we're happy to get the township, uh, board's guidance today on, you know, on any of these issues. With regard to the, what I'll call more the specific questions that were raised, I think a lot of those were, um, addressed by Rodney already. And certainly would be great topics for the board here. Um, of course, the board ultimately gives a direction on these matters.
All right, we got all kinds of hands here. I think the first one up was clerk Cody.
I have a question for Rodney about it's section fourteen, uh, fourteen point two. Now it, it has, the access road shall be paved enough or paved from the edge of the roadway to the lockable gate and for additional minimum of three hundred feet into the site from the lockable gate. Now, my question is, if it's a small project, do they need to do the paved or can they do gravel or does it strictly have to be paved?
That's a good, that's a good question. The, uh, the, the, the reason for the paving requirement is all about protecting the, the public road. Uh, and also protecting, uh, and minimizing dust. Uh, one of the, the is more significant challenges related to extraction operations, regardless of the size, uh, is, is dust, uh, impacts on the neighbors and, and, uh, and dirt and, and gravel material impacts on the public road. Uh, and by, by requiring, uh, and this is from experience, uh, the, the, this requirement is not unique to this ordinance and is not unique to this, the, this community. Uh, this is a requirement that's been developed uh, over, over years of experience, recognizing that by requiring that access road to be paved, at least for the first so many feet in from the public road, it allows the, it limits the amount of dust and amount, uh, that, that is getting out, out, off the site. And more importantly, it also minimizes the amount of dirt and material that is tracked out into the public road. Uh, these operations, uh, can often, uh, trucks coming and going, they're, uh, first of all, they, they can be muddy in the, inside of the site, uh, even on the best days. Uh, but also they, they, uh, you know, the trucks simply are putting off a lot of, uh, dust as they're coming through. So having that section paved, uh, reduces the amount of dust and dirt that gets off-site and therefore reduces the impacts on the road and the amount of, uh, how often that road has to be cleaned up uh, in order to keep, keep those impacts from spreading further. So it's, it's all about dust control and, and, uh, and protecting the public road. Uh, in, in terms of the, the language, uh, it simply says that it has to be paved. Uh, this would be ultimately up to the planning commission to, uh, uh, to make a determination if, if something other than asphalt or concrete was proposed, as they're not, it would satisfy, um, you know, protecting those interests essentially that described. Uh, but the, the language specifically does not say what material for that. It, it, it does say, uh, in the section right above it, about, about the public road, that the, that the access into this facility now needs to be on a, a, a public road that's either asphalt or concrete. Uh, but the actual interior access road simply says has, has to be paved. So there's some flexibility there.
All right, um, I believe the next hand up was Brian Milky.
Uh, bear with me. I think Lisa took care of that. Um, I, I will just make one comment, though, uh, to our manager, if, uh, it's reasonable. Um, when the, uh, response to Mr. Zalid's attorney is given by our attorney, could you carbon the board on that?
Certainly.
Thank you. But, but Lisa addressed what I was going to bring up. I'm sure I have other questions.
Bill, you're up.
Yeah, um, I guess that we're having some great discussion on this, and I'm happy to, uh, talk about this. I know the thing that Lisa just brought up. Her and I talked about that yesterday. I just don't understand if you're on a gravel road, why you would pave off a gravel road back to a pit. I just I don't understand that, and I don't understand that. And like I said, we've had some great discussion tonight, but I don't feel the public is getting enough input on this because first of all, Mr. Zalid, with his questions, if they haven't been answered, how do we know he doesn't have additional questions? So I don't feel like I want to vote on any of this tonight.
You want to bring that up as a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion that if we want to continue some discussion on it, that we can continue some discussion for a few minutes. But I'd like to make a motion that we wait until a proper time when we can get better public input and answers back to the public that have those questions.
So a motion to table?
A motion to table the vote, yes.
Need to have a second on that. Oh, uh, Trustee Lannan.
I have a question, but if someone wants to second or else I will just say I'm a little unclear on Bill's motion as to. I forget exactly how he said it, but I'm not sure on what question he's not sure of to table. I'm, I'm not sure if he's trying to table a second reading or if he's trying to table something until some questions are answered and gotten back from our attorney to Mr. Zalid's attorney.
I'm not saying just Mr. Zalid, if there's other questions too, Tim. I just don't feel comfortable voting right now. Until I know that the public has questions answered. And I just don't feel comfortable. I mean, I just think that if he had questions, they, I think they should have been answered by now.
So you're saying voting on a second reading, Bill? Is that correct?
I'm not, I don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight.
So that would be a motion to clarify. This would be a motion to table the vote, but continue the conversation, correct?
Yes. It didn't get seconded, so.
Okay, Brian?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to supporting, um, what I think you're intending. Um, but from, I guess my perspective, uh, kind of what Tim was saying, it seems, um, are you suggesting we not do a second reading? Cause I, I see this as two steps, right? We, we, a second reading allows us this public discussion, right? And then secondly, uh, if we chose to, we could act or not act to pass this ordinance or turn it down. Um, I, and, and I'm just wanting clarification as well that what you're suggesting is, what, what are you not comfortable voting on tonight? Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm not comfortable and this is a discussion action proposal. And I don't feel comfortable voting to adopt this tonight.
Could you put that in the, say that in the motion?
Yes.
I'll support.
Okay, so this would be a motion to postpone the vote on the second reading, but continue the discussion. Or the second reading itself without the vote, correct? I don't, I guess I'm not sure of clarifying how we want to state that.
Enough tonight. I'm not sure if everybody feels that way or not, but.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. So this would be a motion to table the vote on the ordinance, but continue the second reading. Does that sound appropriate as far as the motion repeating it? Is that how we want to state it?
Brian's got to say it though.
No, I was waiting for discussion, sorry.
Um, uh, Norm?
Yeah, I just wanted some clarity on, so it, if I hear, I'm hearing mixed signals on that. So what you're saying is that we are going to vote to continue with the discussion as far as approval or not approving the, uh, ordinance. But that we are going, but we are approving for the second reading to go forward. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be the postponement of the vote on the ordinance itself, but continuing our discussion.
Okay. Postponing the, the ordinance, but, but also that we're going to have that second reading goes forward.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, right. So are we all, are we all clear? And I hope the public is too. Um, so this would be to continue our second reading with discussion, but postponing the vote on the ordinance at this time until further questions are answered. Um, and the board is comfortable with obviously voting on this subject. Um, so again, we would have to, I, we've got two more hands up. I've got, uh, Tim Lannan and Brian Milky. Uh, Tim Lannan, would you like to go first?
Thank you Supervisor Gunning. To me it seems that we're kind of wrapping two separate motions into one. I would think there would be a maybe a motion made for a second reading. And then maybe followed by either support in a vote to support the ordinance or a motion to not support it. Or maybe a motion to uh, vote at the next meeting after some questions have been answered, delivered and processed back to the board. That's just my thoughts, Bill. I'm not saying anything on your motion other than
hard to understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's confusing.
Cumbersome.
Yeah. So i- we need to make this as two separate motions. That is what we're, we're, our two most, um, uh, experienced trustees are saying is that it'd be clear if it was a motion to, um, postpone the vote on the ordinance itself at this time, or do we want to make and continue with the second reading? I mean, how, it, how do we state it?
Brian has a question.
Yes, Brian?
Uh, thank you Supervisor Gunning. Um, yeah, I guess that's why I raised my hand is, is I, I supported, um, the mo- the original motion partly for discussion purposes. Um, but I felt it was a little bit backwards in that we do have two things that are in front of us here. One is a second reading, which is kind of a public hearing. Uh, not a, not a public hearing in the, in the traditional sense, but it's an opportunity, uh, for us to have that discussion. Um, and as well as public input, uh, through public comment. And so I was going to, depending on the outcome of this vote, either way, going to probably entertain a motion to, uh, call this formally a second reading. Uh, because it gives us the opportunity if, if we choose to, to adopt this in the future. Um, and I think that's what the intent of Trustee Houck's
Yeah.
We want to make sure we're doing our due diligence. I've, I've heard concerns from lots of board members here that we want to make sure we do this right. Um, and so we don't want to rush things. We want to make sure that, um, we're given the proper due diligence. And, and so, uh, I agree with Trustee Lannan's explanation to a certain degree that there, there's kind of separate.
Yeah, I agree.
May I comment on this part of it?
Certainly.
So historically, and the reason this was brought before you the way it is, just to give you a little background. The general ordinance, that, that, they don't require by rule any second reading, but the township has traditionally adopted ordinances by holding a first reading and then a second reading. And at the same time, the second reading also a vote for adoption. So that's why it was brought to you in this manner. The resolution that's at the end of your request for board action. The way it's stated is to, it, it's a resolution to conduct the second reading of the proposed extraction ordinance and to adopt the extraction ordinance. I'm not quite sure what the motion is on the table, but you can certainly approve if that's what you want to do. The second reading, just as you approve the first. Independent of and distinct from a vote to adopt the ordinance.
Better sense than what I said, doesn't it?
All right, so do we want to amend the motion? It is a, a motion that is received a second, so we would have to.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so at this time we continue with the second reading. Um, so we'd be looking for hands. Continue discussion. Looking, looking, looking. Nobody's raising their hand.
I'm coming.
Okay, Trustee Milky.
I, I know I have more questions. Let me look at my list here. Um, I guess I'd like to direct this uh, to Mr. Nanny if he's willing to respond. I see he's muted currently. Um, i- am I accurate in stating that when you were talking about the reclamation bond? That that's actually a tool that currently exists in our special use process that our planning commission can use. It's not traditional that, that it's something that is used by the planning commission. Um, just by practice. Um, but with the purpose of that, at any time in a special use, the planning commission can deem necessary uh, a bonding mechanism to make sure that, A, that the project's completed or in case of bankruptcy, the township's not, um, stuck with a half-finished project. Um, and then handing that over to the county for, uh, you know, their ownership and the, and the headache, right? I mean, is that a reasonable statement I'm making?
Uh, that is, that is correct. There is a, uh, an option in the current ordinance to, uh, require a performance guarantee, uh, to, for, for the, for the exact reasons you said. Uh, there are no specifics as to that guarantee would be set up or the amounts or anything like that, but it certainly can be done if, if the planning commission believes there's a need, uh, since it would be done on a case by case basis.
And, and I think in this case, we're talking about large projects that if not remediated, um, I mean, as you e- express, could be very expensive to the township if it was our responsibility to remediate those. And that's really the purpose of that reclamation bond. Um, I'm just making sure I understand fully.
Yeah, that is exactly correct. If, you know, if the extraction operator uh, takes care of the reclamation as part of their normal course of, and in accordance with approved plans, it actually, uh, uh, would be relatively, uh, all these are relative, but relatively inexpensive for them, them to do it because they already have the equipment on site, the, 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 uh, operators, employees on site. Uh, they've been storing the, you know, material overburden, uh, all properly located, so it's easy for them to put it back. Uh, if, but if the, unfortunately, if the township has to do it in that worst case scenario where the operator is no longer in the picture, uh, whether through bankruptcy or other means, then, then the township would have to do it through, uh, uh, essentially by hiring contractors, also by, of course, through legal action to get, gain access to the property. And all of that is very expensive and that's really why the numbers are high, uh, where they are, uh, as, as recommended. Uh, these are numbers based on experience.
Do you, I'm just for, this is for informational for me, um, you know, some concern I've heard is the, the cost of that. And, you know, I think traditionally it's, um, as you put it, a credit line and you can get a bond agency to do that. What, what, do you know what percentage typically they charge? Is it like a ten percent? Um, that, that, that the applicant would have to put down or do you know how that works?
That's a good question. I don't know, uh, the, the details on the percentages. Uh, it, I think it depends greatly on uh, the, the credit worthiness of the operator, um, um, the, the amount of experience they have, the amount basically their rec- their track record. Uh, I suspect it would vary from, uh, operator to operator in that regard.
Okay, so it's probably that Monzerin wants some assurance and, and they'll, they'll take that risk and they'll use odds essentially of, um, this not being, having to be called in, right? And use that to set their price.
Exactly.
Okay. May I Supervisor, I
Yes.
I don't see other hands.
Yeah.
So I think probably the, the biggest concern, one of the biggest concerns I have, y- you addressed largely, uh, uh, in your opening statement. Um, I'm speaking to you Rodney. Um, and I think this came from, you know, Lisa and I had discussions about, um, the, uh, small pond and you specifically referred to that in, in your explanation. So I, I want to give some scenarios because my fear is that we don't want to, or we don't want to regulate something we're not intending to regulate here, right? We want to make sure that the exemptions cover um, every, essentially everything outside of commercial, uh, extraction operations, right? So if, if I, a common practice, as I understand it, um, with regards to road construction, is they'll often take sand from, uh, something very close. So let's say I have, we're, we're putting in a, a new road and a neighboring property has some sand that could be useful in laying the foundation for that road. If the would it be possible for the contractor at that point to work out a deal with that neighboring property to say, we're going to take some of your sand, use that as the bed and then take some of the topsoil that we're taking off and put that back in your property, essentially do a swap. Um, so that, to minimize the cost of the construction of that road, is that something that's regulated under this? And if, if not, why not?
Right. It, it's a good question. The, the ordinance has a specific exemption for activity that takes place in the road right of way.
Right.
Um, the, uh, the ordinance does not, uh, uh, address this issue specifically. More often than not, uh, with, with our roads today, the, the we're, the material needs to be of a specific grade. And, and it's, it's not, it would not be typical that, that, uh, uh, you know, the road commission, let's say, or certainly, and, and certainly not the state highway department would be, would be pulling material off of a uh, neighboring property. Um, they would, they're, they're, they have certain standards. They, they need to be, there are certain standards that contractors that work for them need to meet. And those typically are only met through, uh, material that has been sorted and graded and, and, uh, and trucked to the site. It, in the instance of, that this would come up, uh, it certainly, we'd have to, have to look at it. Um, but in ter- in terms of what amounts to an incidental activity, um, if that truly is what it is, uh, that would be something I suspect I, I would expect is not regulated by this ordinance. This ordinance is intended to, to, uh, regulate, as you said, extraction operation. Um, and, uh, and so an incidental activity like this, uh, would, uh, I would expect would not be governed by it. Uh, but it, as you said, it is not specifically, uh, called out as a scenario in the ordinance.
Yeah, and I wouldn't necessarily expect that exact scenario. I, I, I think some of the concerns I heard in conversations with, uh, some of my board members is to make sure that we're not regulating, um, you know, the, the small pond. Um, you, you've got, um, maybe some graveling to do in a private roadway. Um, like, say like a driveway that, uh, you know, doesn't require a site plan, therefore doesn't get exemption. Cause I, there is language in there that, you know, if there's a site plan, then there's exemption for this because it, it's going to be regulated through that site plan review process by the planning commission. Um, so if if there was minor movement of dirt, I'm, I'm assuming agricultural, for, for example, you've, you've listed typical agricultural, uh, exemptions. I'm assuming that if a, a farmer was trying to level their land for drainage purposes, if they were moving the, say, crest of a hill um, and, and filling in a low spot, that, that this would not be covered because of that exemption?
That is correct.
Okay, at this time we can, I'm sorry, Brian, are you done?
No, I, I can be done for now. I, I may have additional questions, but I can be done.
Okay, Lisa, you have your hand up.
I am going back to the road. What if there isn't a road?
What if there isn't a road where you can access it from, like, what if it's all dirt road? You know, you can't go in or out from it. What do you do in that case? Or, you know, it says ingress, egress, it has to, you know, for the extraction of it, what if it's mainly on dirt roads, like, all the way around it?
So you're talking the ingress and egress into the mining site?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, as this ordinance is drafted, it requires that that the haul route be on paved public roads. Period. It does not allow for for the haul route to include gravel roads. And and the reason for that is is really related to the amount of damage that is done to gravel roads by the heavy trucks. They they just will shred a gravel road in no time. We we as we, the item that we had on the agenda before this. We know how quickly gravel roads can deteriorate simply from normal traffic. And if we're hauling heavy trucks on it, it it deteriorates that much faster. So a- as this is drafted, it would require the haul route to be on on paved public roads. That is, that certainly if a road, if a if mining site is not on a paved public road, then the operator would have to. Have to address that with the road commission to to secure that access. And this is something that that has been required in other communities. I'm aware of a community or or mining operation. In another community where they had to work with two different counties. To pave, I think it's about three miles of what had been a gravel road. To to create their haul route from from the extraction site. Now, in our case, there's not really any place in the township where anybody would have to pave that much to be able to gain access to a paved public road. But but it is a requirement that's common related to these operations because of the damage that the trucks can cause on gravel.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here. So. I I think what you're saying is fine, i- i- if if the operation is. A large operation where there's going to be a lot of economic benefit to the operator. Like, say, a hubbers. You know, operation, I could I could see that being an issue, but. Typically, these operations are going to be in agricultural areas where they are in approved special use. And and there are simply not very many paved roads that we have. That would fall into that particular. Criteria. The quality of the road, whether it's a type A or if it's a regular county paved road, there's a difference. And obviously, the substructure and the amount of traffic that it can handle. And so I'm confused from that standpoint. Going back to five point three. Where we were just a minute ago with with trustee Milky. And we look at exceptions, and and I think this is an area that really is, I think, a a point of concern to me. Is that you give exception to an ordinary and necessary grading or excavation or maintenance within a private. Or public or private right of way. But as I look up the legal definition of a private right of way. It states typically gives one landowner the right to use another's property, usually a road of some kind to get to and from their land. Which should be more like a Green Acres Drive, McGurk Drive, Meadow Brook, the road that Tim Lannon lives on. Those are all private right of ways. But if we're talking residential driveway. Then all of a sudden, that's not an exception. And I I'm just curious as to, we keep going into this stuff and it seems like. It it doesn't seem like this ordinance is really that specific to our area.
May I just address?
Yeah, I'm ready. Yeah, go ahead.
The, well, again, driveway is not an extraction operation to simply grade a driveway is not. It is, it doesn't even fall within the bounds of this ordinance. Based on the definition of an extraction operation. So simply to regrade a site, whether it's for agricultural adjustment or for residential development or for. Creating a home site or or driveway location, those kinds of land balancing activities. Are currently addressed through the zoning ordinance and through the building construction codes that apply. And they will continue to do so. They simply are not governed by this this ordinance. This ordinance is intended to deal with the specifics of extraction operations. Even a, and I'm not sure, quite frankly. What would be a small operation because no operation that that is extracting sand and gravel from a property. Is small in terms of the impacts, it can have offsite. I mean, whether if if you're moving fifty trucks out or twenty trucks out a day. Or ten trucks out a day, you are you are impacting neighboring properties in terms of noise, dust. Impacting the public road. All those impacts are really there regardless of of the size of the operation. And and this ordinance is intended to to address those impacts as best as possible while ensuring that these activities can take place. And I do want to make sure I emphasize that. This 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 ordinance is actually about ensuring that 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 we we can. Provide for extraction operations to make sure we that we have the supply of material. That's needed for construction activity while protecting the neighbors around it.
But you haven't answered my question is.
I'm getting, I'm getting.
Where in where in this document does it say that I, if I have a driveway? And I want to put some gravel on it. And I want to have it graded.
Right.
It's not an exception, so why is not it an exception?
It's not an exception because it it's not extraction. It's not, as I said, this ordinance specifically is to regulate extraction.
And why are these other items exceptions?
Well, if you notice, if you notice, these options, these these options are all about. About grading, that is true. They're about digging stuff. They're about ditch digging. Much of the activity in the road right of way would be things like digging ditches. It might also be, you know, digging out. A space for culvert or other things like that. So it's it's about about digging holes. That's what these, all these items are really about. Although they use the term grading. In some cases, they also use the term excavation. This is really about digging holes. And it's saying that that these activities that might involve digging holes. Are not considered to be extraction operations that are regulated by this ordinance. Just as under the definition of extraction operation, it talked about the certain activities where some soil might be removed, like a nursery. Or sod farm where naturally some soil goes offsite. That those are also, even though some some mineral materials going offsite, they are specifically not an extraction operation.
But it's still, it doesn't answer my question, is that you take the time to say ordinary and necessary grading. Or excavation or maintenance within a public or private right of way. But what about a residential driveway? And and it goes back to the same question that trustee Milky was saying is is that if we dig a hole in the yard. I mean, it it seems to me that the biggest thing I keep hearing is assumption, assume, assume, assume. So that's now, but this is an ordinance that we're placing that's forty years old. So in thirty years, none of us are going to be here to assume anything. And I think that it's it's important for us to have a document where people aren't having to go to the zoning board of appeals for a text interpretation constantly.
I certainly understand that, and I I have not said we'd assume. This is really about making sure we have a document that that functions. I have no objection to adding the language related to to residential activities in addition to agriculture. If we need to be more specific, but it it's that activity simply doesn't meet the definition of an extraction operation. And so under the scope of the ordinance in section three, it's it's simply not regulated by this ordinance. But I also don't mind at all if we are more specific on that point here and in the exception as well.
Yeah, like I said, I want to al- eliminate as much of the the assumptions as we can and be as specific as we can. Okay, Tim Lannon.
Yeah, thank you, supervisor gunning. Yeah, you could list an exhaustive list of exceptions. I think you could try get into directional boring. Putting sanitary sewers underneath roads, you're removing product. I'm assuming none of that falls into the definition of gravel or sand extraction when you're. Doing that sort of work.
That is correct.
Thank you. But I did want to make a point that I I think it's practical and necessary. That a a truck leaving a. Mining operation. Be cleaned off. And I can understand how that pavement approach onto the road is so important. Because you are in oftentimes. Muddy situation. You're being loaded by. Front end loader type vehicles that may not get all the gravel into the truck itself, but onto the fenders and such. But your mud flaps are picking up a lot of soil, your tires are picking up a lot of earth, mud and things. And you can drive by many just construction sites. And just the electricians going in and out, the concrete guys. An awful lot of soil can get out onto those roads, which can create serious havoc for folks. Oftentimes, especially motorcyclists. Vehicles that can't handle a clump of dirt or the yard. So once in a while, you'll even see a conscientious developer maybe put a broom out on the road. And try to get that product off of the main thoroughfare. So having that solid surface. Exiting out of a mining operation to me seems like a very. Prudent. Infrastructure requirement for that. As well as I would hope there's going to be. Language in that operation, and I I think there probably is in the trucking world of gravel. That you are assuring you're not creating a trail of gravel, soil, aggregate down the road as you exit that road. Because. In my experience. I've experienced that many, 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 many times and wish, I wish that the developer or the owners. Were required to assure that that. Right away that is in front of the exit of their operation would be maintained because it is a very dangerous situation for the public. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go to Brian Milky first and Bill Houck.
Okay, I have three brief things. I do just want to make a statement first. You know, I I looked at our old zoning ordinance or existing zoning ordinance. And it is sorely lacking. And so in in many ways, I'm very supportive of the undertaking that Mr. Nanny has taken. You know, I I think it's important, again, that we do our our due deal, due diligence here, make sure it's the right thing. So one, thank you for what you've started us with here. In fact, I would say that our current zoning ordinance is a little bit negligent to our to our residents. But my, I do have a couple of questions. So i- in the current process, so our current zoning, it's an SUP process. Which is on purpose, an SUP has a certain amount of subjectivity and objectivity to it. It is not just objective, right? It is subjective as well. And the planning commission goes through a list of bullet items to a identify whether or not. An SUP meets their requirements based on their perception of the world and their perception of the township. And at any point, a planning commission. Those nine whatever members could deny or approve SUPs for whatever reasons they decide, as long as it's based on some. The, you know, factual basis, I'm assuming. And then if it passes the planning commission, that. Again, has to go through the board of trustees, which also goes through those same items. And and you again have another body that may approve or reject based on subjective decisions. And if I'm understanding the architecture of the ordinance you're proposing here, that removes that largely, correct? This is if you meet these requirements, you can operate. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Yes, it is. It is intended to move, remove that subjectivity and create a more objective. Process where meet the standards and and the permit will be approved.
So from from my perspective, in some ways, we're actually. Encouraging it more with this process because I I think. Just guessing on human behavior, planning commissioners being laypeople in their community are going to go, I don't want this by my house because of the dust and the dirt, et cetera, et cetera. And there would be a tendency to. Maybe overreact and protect the local residents or neighboring properties. And in some ways, you've you've made it easier. You just got to follow these guidelines, or I shouldn't call them guidelines. You got to follow this ordinance to make sure that we're protecting our wells, that there's a reclamation process. And and so, you know, I've heard the argument. At the beginning of the meeting that, you know, this is completely discouraging, but in many ways, I would argue that actually this opens the door. Just play nice and follow these rules. Is that a accurate statement from your perspective?
I I would say so, yes.
Thank you.
This is true.
Thank you. And then regarding appeals, something that's different here than would other happen under the old ordinance. Under the old ordinance, there's ability to appeal to the ZBA. And that process is different here. And I I think I know the reason why, but I wanted to ask, just so I'm clear. What this ordinance does is it says if you want to appeal. Some of this process from the planning commission, you can go to the board of trustees. And if you don't like the board of trustees' answer either, then you can go to the circuit court of appeal or circuit court. I'm assuming that it bypasses the ZBA because it's not part of our zoning ordinance. Is that accurate?
That is correct, because it's not a zoning ordinance, the zoning board appeals is not involved, and so any action, as board of trustees, this is your ordinance. And so if there is any issues that need to be addressed, or if somebody is agreed with an action of the planning commission. The appeal process was included to give give them the opportunity to come to you and and make their case.
Okay, last thing, if I may, supervisor?
Yes, go ahead.
So. Supervisor gunning expressed some. Interest. I hope you take my characterization okay here, Ben. Some interest in just make some clarifications regarding exemptions. You know, i- if I had. Two large concerns coming in today that I needed to answer. You've addressed a lot of these, by the way, Rodney, in in your presentation. That would be the exemptions, making sure that we're not regulating activities we don't want to regulate. And then I think Ben's concern was trying to address that. And then secondly, the this grandfathering, right? Because it is a police powers act in the sense that. Existing mining operations would need to be in conforming. That's correct, right? Statement?
Because it's not part of the zoning ordinance, there is no grandfathering, yes. So all extraction operations would have to comply with these requirements. As a, right now, there are no active extraction operations in the township. Mr. Zalid, his special use permit is is the only proposed operation. But there are no that existing active extraction operations that would would have to be governed. But so any future activities would all have to comply with this ordinance.
And and we know that because there is no SUPs for that?
But we know that because we've we've reviewed the the township, we've reviewed the the various sites that have had some activity in the past. And and confirmed that there that there are no active extraction operations currently in the township.
And and if there was some that we're not aware of, would that not be legal then?
They would, yes. If if there was some, they would be illegal because right now it requires a special use permit for them.
Right, and and so we actually know that from. We we know that that your statement is true, that there's no active sites, then.
That is correct.
At least they're legal, at least they're legal.
You know, I suppose mention the request for board action. There are there are a couple where there's been activity in the past. You can certainly see evidence of it, neuro photography and such. And there's some history there, but there are no, none that are currently operating.
Okay, so final final point on this, and I do appreciate the time of the board and.
No, you'll be coming up here next, okay?
So with regards to, I'm going to call it grandfather, even though that's not what it is, right? So we have these old sites, and I think you even mentioned the one out by the Holiday Inn, which I think was used to help build one twenty seven years ago. And it's now a a small lake, right? How 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 does this? How does the ordinary, the ordinance articulate the fact that we're not going to come after? How does the ordinary, the ordinance, um, articulate the fact that we're not going to come after those old sites? I guess that's what I'm wanting to help protect against.
Well, the, uh, the requirement for reclamation only applies if you have an extraction permit. You, if you have secured an extraction permit to operate, uh, legally, uh, in accordance with, with the ordinance, then you also have to, as part of that, have a reclamation plan and follow it. So for a site like that where, you know, essentially was a old borrow pit, uh, there, there's no. Uh, requirement for them to do anything more with that site because they do not, nobody is, uh, nobody's extracting material there. Uh, if somebody came in and said, look, I want to, I want to increase the size, I want to double the size of that lake. Uh, I believe there's more material to, uh, to begin. They would follow the, the extraction permit process to, uh, to be able to do that.
So i- in addition, just to even the reclamation perspective, but having to, um, conform with like ingress and egress and everything else that's in here. Because they're not having to permit it, it would not be an issue.
That's right. It's, it's simply not governed by this ordinance because they're not in extraction operation.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Ben. Thank you. I'm all done for the moment.
All right, Bill.
One quick one, um, trustee Landon had mentioned before, um, we talked about. Paving the roads back into the pit and, you know, we all heard Jim's explanation of everything, like how the roads get mud on him and everything. Well. As far as the main reason we're talking about this, we might as well admit it's because of Zalid's pit that he's talking about putting in. There's no way this guy will even ever be able to put this thing in. Cause he's going to have to pave Lincoln Road. He'll have to pave a half a mile of Lincoln Road and then he'll have to pave. About 600 feet back into his pit. What do we do if someone wants to log? If someone has a logging operation, if they're logging off a 40 acre piece of woods. Well, I mean, it's all over right now. I've been down roads in the last week that bloggers have been in. What about farmers? What are we going to do with all of them? We don't regulate what they do. Yet we're going to turn around and say that we have to pave a road to have a gravel pit back to it? I, I just don't understand that, Rodney. I, I mean, it makes no sense. How, how would anyone ever be able to afford to do it?
Well, extraction operations are, are run all over the state and, uh, and they do operate, uh, within bounds of ordinances similar to this and, uh. And requirements similar to the ones that are proposed. Uh, with any requirement in this ordinance, the, if, if the, if there is, uh. A preference for an alternative or an adjustment to the wording, that's absolutely a policy of the township. And as township board, you know, it, you, you set those policies. The recommendation here is, is based on experience. Uh, in other communities, they had experience with, with other extraction operators and, and others, other extraction operation sites. The, uh, but, but certainly it is, it would be completely appropriate if the board would prefer not to require. That, uh, either the, the, the hall route or the, the interior access drive be paved. That is a completely appropriate change to make. As I said, that's all, you know, your, your policy to make that we're, that, uh, that we would then implement. Uh, the, the reason there, the requirements there is, is that is simply based on experience elsewhere.
Right. All right.
Okay, Brian, you took your hand down?
Oh. I mean, I mean, it's be up.
Oh, okay. All right. Why don't you go ahead and then I'm going to speak after you. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So following up on, uh, trustee Houck's, um, question then, so i- in the event. I guess we can use this case since you brought it up that if, um, Mr. Zalid was to, uh. Be approved for permitting for, uh, the, the application that he had sub- submitted to the planning commission. Um, it, if that were to. Be under this ordinance. Um, there is a variance process, right? So, um, i- is your experience that in communities have, have used this that. It would be not uncommon for the applicant to approach the board of trustees and say, this is my situation. Can we work with you on this? And it would be up to the board then to provide, um, either approval or denial of a variance request?
Uh, that, that is true. There are actually, there are really three forms of relief related to this order. Three relief valves. One, we've already talked about that appeal process. Uh, the second one is one you just mentioned that, that the ordinance is titles at variance. Now it's not a zoning variance.
Right.
Uh, but it's a very, uh, adjustment from this ordinance. And yes, it comes to the board. Uh, they make their case to the board as to why a different standard is more appropriate. And, and the board would have the ability within the bounds of that, of that, the variance section to take an action to grant certain relief. There's also, I would just mention, there's also a section, uh, that, that allows it as far. And, uh, waiver of certain, what the ordinance calls base documents. Let's just call it, uh, information, you know, the, the plans and information that's required. Uh, that, that the planning commission can waive certain information requirements as part of an application where they find it's not necessary. The, for a particular application. So for example, if, uh, if an applicant is, is not going to be mining anywhere near. The, uh, you know, the level of groundwater that area. Uh, the, the, the planning commission, uh, with some documentation from the applicant showing this. Could waive requirements that would otherwise apply related to hydrogeologic studies and that sort of thing. So there, there are a number of ways that relief can be granted where it's appropriate, uh, based on specific circumstances.
I had, um. Something that nobody else has brought up yet, and that's on the inspections. And again, I think it's just clarifying language. Is in there in section 18.2, it states, um, members of the planning commission shall have the right to enter the subject property and upon notification. To the applicant owner operator to conduct necessary inspections while reviewing an extraction permit application. Uh, but it doesn't really say that, that the, the clarifying language that this should be an organized. Um, group, um, or that it is maybe with a representative of the township's planning and zoning department. So what would stop somebody that, um, maybe has an axe to grind or doesn't want to have the, uh, the gravel pit down his road. Um, seeing that the penalty for not following up on that to be applicant owner ex- extract or owner applicant owner operator. Would be a violation of the ordinance. So in other words, it's, it's, it's not real specific. It, it, it could be like one individual member according to how it reads. Could say to Jim Zalid, hey, I want to go on your property and inspect it. At 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. So what happens if? That doesn't happen and then so, you know, I mean, i- is that I, I think in that maybe it needs to be a little bit more specific is that that has to be. At the, um, you know, an organized effort amongst the, the, the planning commission with the planning and zoning, um. Administration member present.
I, I don't object to the change. This, this language is, is similar to what, you know, what the planning commission has related to. To, uh, your project comes in for site plan approval. It's simply to allow the planning commission to become familiar with the site. Uh, so that, you know, that, that, uh, and that's all this is. It's really intended to, uh. To say to the applicant, if you are going to apply for this, you are going to need to allow. The township representatives to enter your property for the purposes of familiarizing themselves. Uh, so it's, it's, it's intended to be a, uh, simply essentially a notice to the, to the, to the applicant that they're going to have to address that issue. Um, but I, I don't mind it all if, if we provide some more specific.
Okay.
Ben, Ben, could you reference the section on that one again?
Um, that was, um, 18.2.
There, I remember reading it. Thank you.
Uh, Lisa.
I. I still don't feel like we should have to pave a road. If it's all there all the way around. I mean, I don't feel it's fair. I mean, to take care of it, yes, but to completely pave the road, I don't. I don't feel that.
Yeah. I, I, I did, I, I concur also. I, I think it's. If, if it's, it's a gravel road. I mean, when you go on these gravel roads, there's the farm, farmers come out of the field and leave. You know. Residue from the farm fields on the road, um. Um, and like Bill said, why, why should this be any different than, than that or even a logging operation? Um, Tim?
Yeah, I could, uh. I appreciated what Bill brought forth in regards to my. Um, mentioning that I supported the pavement. There's. Or the, uh. Asphalt, whatever method to help assure that the trucks leaving are on a very solid surface. And not coming through a muddy surface right onto the road. But, um. I think the important part of that really is assuring. What aggregate gets transferred out of the site onto the public roadway. You know, you could, uh. Eliminate that. Paved portion inside the road, but then I would want to have some assurance. That there's going to be virtually zero collection of loose aggregate, muds, earth. Whatever on the public roadway because that creates a very dangerous situation for traffic. You think about maybe some clay or something on the road. It becomes a little rainy day out there. You get a very slick situation happening. So. Um. My position is just assuring that that. Uh, road stays clean.
That's addressed to my 14.3. That's village.
Thanks, Bill.
Um, it's 9:10 as we speak. I don't see there's any possible way that. We're going to come to a resolution and approve this at this time. Do we want to? Think about making a motion at this time to, um. Postpone discussion. Um, I would personally like to make, including that motion is, is. There's a lot of stuff on here that, that we just simply don't know. Um. I really think that what needs to happen to make everybody happy. Um, and to come up with the best possible ordinance is I think we need to have a discussion and, and I think that discussion needs to involve. Um, citizens, board members, and I think that the excavation community, um, needs to have. Some input on this too. I think that we could alleviate a lot of issues. Um, that we've seen earlier tonight, um, just simply by having, um, open dialogue. And I, I keep looking at this and I think that's the one thing that I keep, keep feeling that we, we never really. Gave this industry the chance to was to have. Open dialogue and I think they've asked for it right along. Um, so I, I personally think that a motion to. To postpone this discussion. Um, should include some type of emotion that we would like to see that type of communication happen. And I'm going to leave the discussion up to you folks and I see, uh, Brian Milky's got his hand up.
All, all I wanted to address, Ben, um, not completely related to, to what you're saying is, um. You know, I, I think my goal is to try to come up with the best we can, we, we can regarding this ordinance. Um, do, do we have an ability here tonight collectively to give some guidance? To township staff, um, and manager as far as are there changes we want to see? Um, how do we make it better? Um, if there are some of those that we can identify now collectively, then maybe we suggest. That they bring back, uh, some modifications to languages, proposals. Um, ju- just thinking that, um, you know, we, we have a moratorium in place, uh, with the purpose of allowing us to do this. Um. The clock is ticking, right? And we should continue to be able to move this forward to where we feel there's consensus to either vote it up or down. Um, I don't disagree with, uh, making sure we get input from anybody that wants to give us input, Ben. Thanks.
Yeah. Uh, Lisa.
I think. My opinion, I mean, I like a lot of this. I, I think it's worried well, a lot of it, but. Like I said, I don't think we have to pave the road. I mean, if you, I, I like the easement onto the road if the road is already paved. But I don't think we should have to pave a mile of road just to do that. I think it should have an exception on there. This is strictly all my opinion. Um, somewhere. You know, a lot of my questions that I did have were already answered by Rodney. About, for instance, the pool. I didn't know if maybe that should be specified in there, refer to the Michigan State law. Whichever it is, or Michigan ordinance, blah, 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 pool, you know, digging it, not a pool, uh, pond. But, you know, a lot of this I think looks good. I mean, I read it three times. And I just happened to miss that one little thing on the paving the road portion of it. So, there's what I mean.
I think the grandfather, um, has to be clarified as to how. Individual excavation companies could be affected by that or existing operations. You know, Allah, Elmers and, and, and central S V concrete. Um, and I, I, I keep hearing assume, 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 and I'd rather have clear language that, you know, didn't have assume in it. Um. I think that's one thing that we talked about exceptions as far as residential activities, the normal upkeep of a, a residential driveway. Um, or a pond in the backyard and maybe there's a way that you can come up with ver- wording that, 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 that clarifies. You know, those activities as not being, um, a part of the ordinance. And then Tim, I, I like what you're saying about the. The, um, hard surface. You know, coming out of the, the, the pit area, but I guess does it have to be paved? Or does it have to be just simply, um, you know, a, a, a gravel. Area that meets the requirements of a gravel road by, per the, you know, uh, specifications of the county road commission. Um, Brian?
Um, well, I was listening to you and I lost my train of thought. Um. Back, back to Lisa's briefly on your comment regarding the, the paving of the public roads. Um, I, I guess a question to, to nanny and I'm trying to, um, go at your experience here. Is it? Unreasonable in the case that it's on a gravel road that some of the liability of the upkeep, because it's, it is going to take a beating in the cases gravel road. Would it be reasonable to have some latitude in this to require that? The operator in that case work with the township to help main, keep that maintained? It'll, so it would be less, much less cost than having to pave it.
Right. You know, the challenge we have as a township is, is, uh, is, they're not our roads. They're county roads or they're state roads or, I mean, obviously a private residential street is its own thing. But for the public roads, although we are called upon to pay for them as we, as we did with the previous agenda item. Uh, we're, the county, uh, has every, requires the township to, uh. Uh, to contribute to the maintenance of the gravel roads. Uh, we don't control them. And, and so we have only limited ability. To, to, uh, compel an applicant, even in this kind of a case where we're outside of zoning. Zoning is, you know, is really about the, the private property. It's, it's a use on the private land. Uh, here, outside of that, where we're, we're dealing with this permitting process. Uh, we have a little bit more leeway, but it still doesn't get us to the point of being able to, to essentially act. Uh, as the agent of the road commission to, to require a certain maintenance activity. Uh, the, the road commission, uh, can do what they wish, uh, within their scope of authority and they may or may not. I, that's up, yeah, it's up to the road commission on how they, they handle that where, where we have. Some ability to, to have say beyond the boundaries of the property. It's, is related to the hall route and that's really just simply accepting the hall route. Say, yes, that's, you know, that, uh, that hall route. Uh, works and it's about minimizing impacts on neighbors. Uh, and, and the language in 14.3 that was mentioned earlier about cleaning up spills. That's a reasonable, uh, item to require, but to get to the point of requiring, uh. Ongoing, uh, the gravel, that, that gets, that gets harder. And that's really why, uh, for these, these regulations, why we. And that's really why, uh, for these, these regulations, why we had, uh, and other communities have headed in the direction of simply requiring that, that they only access a paved road. If it's not paved, that's between them and the road agencies involved to, to fix that problem. Uh, we simply say that from our perspective, uh, as, as anyway, this proposed ordinance says, you know, you must be on a paved road. That way the damage to the road is, is limited.
Would it be reasonable, Lisa, um, if the language were to say may require? That would allow some latitude where at least we would have the legal right to require it if we felt it was necessary?
Yeah.
And it would provide some latitude for certain cases where we would waive that requirement?
Yeah.
It would be, in this circumstance, to simply allow the variance process to, to address that. Uh, because really what you're talking about here is exactly the kind of format we have with a special use permit under zoning. And, and that's not what this ordinance is intended to, to do. It certainly relief from a road paving requirement is something that, that an applicant can apply for variance. Uh, apply to the board and seek that, that, that change. Um, but I, I'd rather follow that process than to have the kind of discretion that, that is really more appropriate in a special use permit kind of format.
And that makes sense. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, going along with what Brian just said, I was gonna, I don't know how many of you guys have been around any of the windmills that are being built, but there's one going up right across the road from my house. And all of those, all of those access roads, Lisa, Brian, those are all limestone. And to say the one going up across the road from my house is a little over a quarter of a mile off the road. And with the limestone on the road, with the limestone to the access road from the public road, there's hardly any, just say spillage on the roads. And then I, you know, I know the windmill company's cleaning them up, and I'm sure that any excavator would be required to clean it up too. So that's one thing that we could do is maybe require limestone in an instance like that. But with Zal, I mean, where his would be, you know, being on a gravel road, have it be limestone back to the gate, then back to his parking area.
All right. I don't see any hands up.
May I, Ben?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to take a minute here and, and coalesce a little bit what, what I've been hearing and and, uh, and then a couple of observations for the board to continue to consider. What, we're a township that, from a larger picture is moving. You know, we, we're trying to balance the rural character with, with the urban character. And we've seen that movement over the last decades. And all our roads used to be gravel or dirt. And over time, the township has been working to get all the roads paved. And I think that's still true from a large policy statement. As I've listened to the discussion, it seems like where, where they're, where I have heard possible changes to the language of the existing ordinance that would not be accommodated through the various variance options that exist are things like tweaking the language in the inspection area. Um, the tweaking the language in the exception area for typical residential activities. I, my sense is, is that those two things have, have, as discussed, have met with some acceptance by maybe the majority of the board. I don't, you know, I don't want to know, I don't know if I want to go that far, but my sense is, other things like the requirement to pave the road and, and whatnot. I, I really think you ought to rely on the existing variance process. And that, you know, for instance, the, the, the road deal, I'm not sure that I've heard, uh, consensus around that issue. And so what I fear is if, if we go back and we try to add language to that effect, then we're just going to start spinning our wheels and going in circles. And all we're really doing is gauging and delay whether it's of our own volition or, or not. And coming back to, we do have moratoriums that have, uh, time limits. The idea of making sure we're not regulating in this ordinance, something that we don't want to regulate inadvertently or otherwise. We, we could maybe take a look at that because we certainly aren't trying to regulate. We don't want to regulate anything. We don't want to regulate. Uh, it seems to me that when you look at definitions and you look at purpose and you look at intent, that it's clear to somebody that is, who's reading closely what's going on here. And so that's where I think I've heard enough for the administration. And so I just wanted to pause there and, and one, make sure I'm hearing things right. You know, alternatively, I mean, just, just, just ask us to go back and, and do some language word changing or changes that, you know, get at the broad concepts are just too many. But, you know, there's too many assumptions here. Um, but that, we're not going to be able to do that successfully. And so I don't know, uh, if, if I've heard correctly the emphasis on the things I've mentioned or not.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I think that, you know, I, I think the, the big sticky point is obviously the grandfather issue, but it seems like that can't be really handled as a general ordinance. It sounds like that would be, have to be more of a, of a zoning ordinance. Um, presentation as opposed to a general ordinance presentation is accurate, Rodney?
Well, as I said, there are no existing operations that would be grandfathered in right now, uh, because there, there, there are no current operations in the township. There are some past sites, uh, that if somebody wanted to renew an activity there, um, they, they, they would be governed by the, the current ordinance. But that, that's simply a case of fairness as well, so that all extraction operators are governed by the same set of rules. That's one of the benefits of going through this, this process. For those sites that are long closed, like the, the, you know, the small lake or central concrete, yeah, with, I, I think we can address that through language and the, the, the exceptions to make it clear that those are not.
That's, yeah, I think that's important. I think that would probably satisfy a lot of people if, if that it was more specific, right? And I think that what we kind of learned is, is it's, at least I have, is that, um, a lot of this is, is just being specific and, um, uh, addressing, you know, items in a way that, that it's, it's clear. Um, because the last thing in the world we want to do is again, is have, you know, the text interpretation parade coming into the zoning board of appeals, right? Um, so the clearer we can make it, more concise we can make it, the better. Um, Tim Lannan?
Thank you Supervisor Donin. Um, I think what's before us is, um, an incredible ordinance that, uh, the timing is, uh, very appropriate and, and actually fortunate that there are no current mining operations in the township, not impacting any current activity that may have started a month ago or 20 years ago. It's been demonstrated, nothing is happening. We do have an applicant before said is interested in doing some extraction though. And, um, as a board member, and again, a goal of all of ours was to get a handle on old ordinances and bring them up to current, uh, appropriateness to meet today's standards. And uh, yep, we could tweak some words, uh, try to make some clarity, but, um, I'm sure we would never put all the exceptions in to address, uh, the potential uh, exceptions out there. Something of interest to me that came up is, uh, talking about, uh, the logging industry and the farming industry that may be putting debris on road, roads that, you know, from my perspective is a hazardous situation on public roads. So I think that, uh, is a bit insightful to maybe be more inclusive, but I don't think that falls under what we're talking about here as far as, uh, uh, extraction operation. And because, you know, it was said agriculture, they may manipulate, um, topography, but that's not mining. And, uh, loggers, they're not digging, they're removing trees. And residential and standard commercial development work isn't mining. Uh, I think, um, if you took a body of reasonable people that, um, had somewhat of an understanding of this, when you read a definition for the first or third time in an area that you're not overly familiar with, it might sound a little, um, odd, but if you have some knowledge in the area, I, I think a few readings of that definition and some discussion made things very clear. I would hope we could at least make a motion for a second reading. I just want to take a pulse if that's possible with this ordinance. As it stands, I know we were talking about some tweaking and stuff, but just trying to uh, move forward. Understanding, you know, uh, we have a lot of ordinances in front of us that we will have to work on. And, um, even if there is some verbiage modification, which may or may not happen as a second reading possible.
Your next meeting would be eight, would be four twenty-two. Um, our first, the moratorium initially was due to expire, what date? May what?
Thirteenth.
May thirteenth. So at that point, if we were at a point where we all felt comfortable and we wanted to say approve the, the ordinance with, um, maybe the verbiage adjusted as what we talked to tonight, it would still have to be published in the newspaper at that point, correct? But we would be at a point, because we do have a meeting on thirteenth that we could actually either extend or, or vote on the ordinance even that time, but so I don't think that there's any, I, I don't know if there's a consensus here, but I don't know if, I'm, I, I would like to see the language completed before we voted on it.
May, may I at this point?
Mm-hmm.
So if, if you want to split it into two votes, then you would be voting on, you know, tonight, a motion to approve, conduct the second reading and, you know, let's just hypothetically say that gets approved. Um, that, that has just allowed the process to, to continue. You have not adopted the ordinance yet. The language changes that I envision are of a nature that could be, that, that they're not so significant to the nature of the ordinance that it would require this thing to start all over again, for instance. So those, those updated languages could be brought back in, when you're considering adoption of a final ordinance.
Yeah. And so at that point in time, we still have satisfied a lot of the, 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 the changes and the questions that people have. Um, Tim Lannan?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, approve the a second reading of the, uh, extraction ordinance as, uh, currently stated.
So we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll support.
Okay, a motion and a support. And to clarify, this would be to approve the second reading, but the ordinance itself is not approved, correct? So it would, it would go through another vetting process at our next meeting?
Well, I is making a motion for a second reading of, of this, uh, uh, proposed extraction ordinance as supervisors or managers, stool, dryer indicated, you know, some language changes could take place. And then, uh, approval of the ordinance would be conducted hopefully at our next meeting.
And in that time, we would still have the same opportunity to have discussion, obviously, and look at the proposed changes and make sure that everyone is comfortable with the changes that are made, correct? As when a clear of all that before we put this to vote.
Yeah, that's how I understand it. There's not a motion on the table to pass the ordinance. There's a motion on the table to have a second reading.
Procedurally, we would bring another separate item to you at the next meeting. The request would be adoption of the extraction ordinance. And the document would contain, you know, strikeouts and additions, so you can see what, what changed from the original. And you get a clean new one. And you would continue your discussion and either prove, approve that as presented or, or not.
Okay. Or, or if we need more tweaks, we can always send it back to the workshop and have it come back again, right? So, until we're all comfortable.
Keeping in mind, we have, um, a moratorium deadline, and at some point, um, the applicant could be operating under the, uh, I'll call them at this point, old regulations.
Yeah. So the twenty-second would be our next meeting, then the thirteenth, which would be the last day of the moratorium, would be the meeting after that. Um, all right. So we do have a motion and a second. Norm, your hands up.
Um, yeah, I've been sitting back tonight listening because I wanted everyone else to have their say with my, my influencing or, uh, giving my opinion on things. Um, I think it was a great discussion tonight, and I think it was very thorough and I think extremely diligent. Um, what I concluded, what you're all saying, and I think I started off with this from, from the get-go, is that I think relatively this is a really well-written and put together ordinance. I believe that it protects the township. I think it protects the environment and provides, uh, guidelines and direction for, uh, extractors. So I think it is a win-win-win all around. So I'm pleased with that. I think what I've heard from the board is that what, what's not required is any type of, this isn't a, a major overhaul that we have to do. This may require a simple tune-up. And in that tune-up, I've heard Mark identify and, and I think Ben articulated well, and I think you all have articulated really well about some of the concerns you have in terms of the language. And I think this has to do more with the language in terms of specificity, to make sure that everyone understands exactly what is and what isn't being regulated here. So that being said, I feel very comfortable though, having this go forward as a second reading. But bear in mind that the specificity for the items that we've talked about, we want a little bit more, uh, a language change, that that will be conducted and available at the next meeting for us. So I'm very supportive and comfortable in going forward at the second meeting with a second reading here. Um, and I'm certainly on board in terms of that we have more discussion and wait until we get the, uh, the final verbiage on this at the next meeting and then decide if that can, we go ahead with the vote.
Yeah. Well, well put, Norm. You know, again, we have to, the, the township's going to live with this, this ordinance for a long, long time. So, you know, the extra week it takes or two weeks is, is very important to make sure that. you know, the extra week it takes or two weeks is, is very important to make sure that we make sure everything is, is clear. So I like what you're saying. What I don't like is that you get really a comfortable couch to sit on and I'm sitting on a hard stool. I'm, I'm currently trying to feel both of my cheeks right now in the back end and I can't feel either one.
Turn on the TV and have it real low, but I feel
This worth, I'm going to stand up. So we have a motion and a second. And so at this point, if we don't, I will do have a hand up. Uh, Brian?
Uh, uh, briefly, and I think this is somewhat related to the motion. Um, and what we, what we see from uh, the board, wh- this motion is that we take this, make some minor modifications, uh, bring it back to the board. Um, I think there is, I, I think a broad consensus that we're open to input from any, any part um, partners or residents or excavators and want to encourage if they want to submit um, information to the board, that they're welcome and encouraged to do so. Um, I know I've personally talked to excavator. Uh, I know some of the other members in our board have talked to excavators. Um, you know, we're not trying to ignore their input here. But so i- if they have things to say, I encourage them to submit their comments to the board, just like I would encourage residents to do so.
Well put, Brian. I think that's everybody's, you know, I've had multiple conversations. Um, I've known most of these people for most of my life. And um, I think it's important that, that in their industry that they have at least some, some say. Um, whether there's some items that maybe um, you know, are, are real clear to them and, and they have question. So I think it's important that we get as much feedback as possible and, and, and create the best possible in, uh, ordinance that we can. That's fair to everybody. Any further questions, concerns before we take this to vote? All right. At this point, we would, um, if I remember the motion correctly, because it's been a while, is to prove the second reading uh, of the ordinance. Um, and with the idea that it'll be coming back to us in our next meeting with um, proposed changes in language. Correct, Tim?
Yeah, I was offering to a, approve the motion for a second reading of the extrication ordinance as uh, written.
Okay. And we had a second from Brian on that.
Right.
Okay. So motion Lannon, second Milky. And clerk Cody, roll call.
Supervisor Gunning.
Yes.
Treasurer Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Milky.
Yes.
Trustee Howt.
Yes.
Trustee Lannon.
Yes.
Trustee Worley.
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Well done, folks. All right. Um, I almost hate to look to see if there's more, but there is. Um, see, uh, I'm going to have to get my brain cleared here. Um, this is a discussion action item, consider amendments to item two of the duties and authority section of the township manager employment contract to clarify that authority for removal of township staff vest for the position of township manager in accordance with township manager's job description and governance policy manual. So this is open now.
I'm sorry, did, were you turning that over to me, Ben?
Um, yeah. I gotta get myself opened up here.
As you're doing that, I'll just be, try to be real quick. This paperwork that begins on page ninety of your agenda packet. And this is the final item of three items that needed to be updated regarding the vested authority with the township manager on uh, termination discharge of employees. At your February twenty-sixth meeting, you added language to the governance policy in this regard. You approved language in township manager's job description. And as had been indicated, the third piece was the employment agreement with the township manager that references similar language as these other two items. So this is bringing back the, the last, the three pieces to you. The, there's a particular section in the existing employment agreement. Um, item number two, title duties and authorities. I'm adding one word to that in this recommendation, and that's the word terminate in between reassign and evaluate. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
I would make a motion that we um, approve the amendment to item number two of the duties and authority section of the township manager employment contract to clarify that authority for removal of township staff with the visit. Removal township staff. Best, best with, I'm not sure if that is with, um, okay, to clarify the uh, authority of the removal of township staff with the position of the township manager in accordance with the township manager job description and governance policy manual.
Okay. So there is a motion on the table. Do we have a second on that?
Support.
So we have a motion, Worley, support Rice. Discussion is open.
I think we've already agreed um, in terms of providing
But you're a little raised hand up there.
Do I have to recuse myself again?
Okay, yep. Yep, understood. So clerk Cody's um, recusing yourself from the conversation and vote on this item. Norm, raise your hand. Yep.
Um, so we have already, as you see in the presentation here, we have already approved. Um, we've added the, to add a terminate to the township um, manager. Oh, basically what this will do, it, it will synchronize with the other relevant documents or policy governance manual and the township manager job description. We have already approved this um, verbiage, verbiage within that and vested that right with an authority with the manager. So all we're doing is adding this now to his employment contract as well to have them all be in sync with each other. So I think that it makes sense to, you know, go ahead and prove this.
Okay. Um, my only re- reservation here was is that, if, if I remember correctly, I think Brian, actually you brought this up along with me was a slight concern as to the um, process that would be involved um, grievance wise with the um, non-collective bargaining unit of, of the township. And with us not having a human um, resources department, um, how do we, I mean, I, I, I don't want to just make this change until that's addressed. Is, is how does a, um, you know, if, if, if the person has like Mr. Nanny, who just joined our outfit decides that um, he's got a real problem in the way he's being treated inside the building, how does he how does he file agreements? And then we don't really have a good policy for those members that aren't in the um, bargaining unit. I mean, bargaining unit has their, their, their tier of, of grievance, right? But, but the non-bargaining unit people really don't. And I think just to protect things in the, in the future i- is that there should be some language, you know, we don't really have it. You go to a board member, boy, that's pretty difficult to do. Um, Brian?
Uh, yeah, I, I did bring this up with you, and I think this was the meeting uh, Mark missed. I think he was on vacation at the time. So it might be helpful to explain that discussion, I think, that we had. Um, and is that seem accurate, Mark, that you were miss, not part of that discussion? I'm assuming you don't have recollection.
It's accurate that I was not at the meeting.
Okay, so um, yeah, I think the concern, so go ahead, Mark.
What you're talking about. I watched the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I understand that there are some need, at least by maybe a majority of the board to do something more than what you currently have. And, and there is protection, that there is a right. I, I, I am prohibited from preventing a employee from going to the Board of Trustees with uh, a grievance, that's the, that's the word you're using. But I, I saw that, I read it, it's on my list. Uh, to tighten that up, the board did not want to wait till the larger personnel policy was developed. So I plan on bringing something forward to you. I'm not sure what it is yet. But I, I, I did watch the meeting and I, I heard what was said.
Norm, you got your hand up?
Yes, I'm going to call, call this a question, um, because we did answer this in the past in terms of, we did, they did have a discussion, this has been answered. So I'm going to call a question, the uh, the current motion.
Okay, we do have a call to question. So um, without Lisa, you can still, yeah, okay.
Supervisor Gunning.
No.
Treasurer Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Milky.
Yes.
Trustee Howt.
Yes.
Trustee Lannon.
Yes.
Trustee Worley.
Yes.
All right. Motion does pass and we move.
May, may I interject briefly? So Mark, did I hear from you correctly? Because I, I think Ben's concern is, is reasonable. You feel there's direction from this board to come back to us, correct, regarding uh, formal procedures so that um, employees like uh, Mr. Nanny here have, know their recourse if they need it?
I, yeah. What, what I plan on doing is reviewing the existing documentation and reporting back to the board whether or not what you're trying to if it doesn't, I would have something with you for you to consider. If I think that what currently exists satisfies your need, I'll report that out.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the only reason why I voted no on that is I'd like to see that language. All right. So we move to item D. Um, this is Board of Trustees annual review of Board Governance Policy three point three, Board Members Code of Conduct. Um, I'm looking for hands, 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 hands. Hands, 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 hands.
What Mark usually presents.
This, this is the annual review of policy three point three. There's uh, the full policy starts on page ninety-two or might be ninety-four. Ninety-four of your agenda packet. At its highest level, the policy states that the board commits itself, members, to ethical business-like and lawful conduct, including proper use of authority, proper, appropriate decorum when acting as board members. There's a, a half a dozen at least sub-policies under that. I'm not going to read each of those. Uh, but this is the opportunity for the board to kind of monitor itself uh, as it relates to a policy that is applicable to the board versus a policy applicable to the administration. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Norm.
Okay, I'll start. Um, I've struggled today with how to uh, address this issue um, now under these circumstances. And even more so because I think this has been a really um, constructive and a very productive meeting tonight. But I feel that I need to respond to this in a honest and open manner. Um, where the reluctance comes is that, you know, with so much despair and turmoil, you know, currently going on in the world, I don't want to be adding any more negativity than what needs to be said. But as trustees, we are required to honestly evaluate the, the board's uh, you know, compliance with this uh, particular policy. Um, so I'm going to make this brief. Um, I think on some of the aspects of the policy, um, I think that we're in adherence um, to the requirements. But I think in other areas, um, we're not in compliance. And the non-compliance is resulting primarily from one board member's continued infractions of the policy. Despite numerous interventions um, by the board to rectify the situation, the board continues to receive very contentious, sometimes derogatory and accusatory emails which are directed primarily at the manager, which I think we all feel are unprofessional and they undermine our, our code of conduct. So I'd say that in this area, we're failing. And how I view it is that if one member fails, I think then the entire board fails because dysfunction then resonates on us. On a positive note, though, I do want to say that there's been a noted change upon in the past couple of days in regard to this. And I think we're all hoping that this new pattern will become permanent and that we will be in complete compliance with this, with our code of conduct as a board.
Bill?
Yes, I think we're in, like Norm said, with most of it, we're in compliance, but there is one that we've been, that's been brought to our attention so far this year in a letter from Doug LaBelle. We all remember that letter referring to a vote on the ZBA. But we just have to remember that when we should recuse ourselves from a vote or deliberation, that we do that. And I know that's happened tonight. I noticed a couple of times where Lisa, it affected her and she he didn't vote and she didn't deliver it. Well, I just wanted to make sure that we continue to do that in the future.
And looking for hands, Brian?
Um, I, I, I'll back both comments that I heard from both of our trustees, uh, trustee Worley and trustee Howt. Um, just to reiterate, I, I think by and large, we're in compliance. Um, however, we need to continually work um, as a board of watching our boundaries with the staff. Um, it is not our, our job to uh, you know, c- criticize the staff except through the manager if we have concerns. Um, and, and we just need to be conscious of that at all times. And I think um, you know, we need to be respectful and, and uh, conscious of our interactions with each other too, that uh, we, we had some great dialogue tonight and we always have to be conscious of respect of different opinions. Uh, because together, I think we're stronger, right? Um, we, we all bring different perspectives to this board. Um, and that's a good thing. And uh, we need to listen to each other and respect each other's opinions. Um, and I'm not saying that that's not necessarily happening, but we need to continue to work at that. Uh, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, one of the things that um, I wrote down about um, that I think we still need to work on to be in compliance is three point three point three. Um, you know, there've been, there've been issues, um, and I think they're getting better. So I think we're working on it, but it just, you know, like, like other board members have mentioned tonight, you know, just making sure that, you know, we're not talking about other people, talking about other members, we're not interacting with people and people and saying things that we shouldn't be saying. Um, you know, it it just um. If there's if there's one part of this that I think we really need to focus on, it's that. The 3.3.3, so.
And looking for hands. All right.
Oh, so you just got a hand.
With your hand.
Oh, oh, yeah, Tim.
Thank you. Since we're not in full compliance, I guess I'll say we are not in compliance. And um one of the ones that I point out, first of all, that is so important for us to keep in the fore of our mind would be 3.3.1, which states members must have loyalty to the ownership. And when we talk about ownership, we're talking about the citizens of our township. The people who have voting rights in our township due to the fact that they live in the township pay property taxes. And that is our number one priority. Uh, sometimes I think we are conflicted due to loyalties to other organizations that would be subcircular to the ownership of the township. And uh maybe personal interest as consumers. And to operate on the highest ethical values possible, you may really want something for somebody. Maybe because that's their business area. But the good of the ownership of the full community certainly has to be weighed uh as that is our most highest priority. Uh. The other area that I found that maybe we fail in it, I feel we are failing right now in this area, 3.3.3, actually, the same one that Treasurer Rice brought up, and that's boards. Board members may not attempt to exercise individual authority over the organization. And depending on your position on the board, you do have some statutory duties that are assigned to you. But um to me, I think we've got an ongoing failure in this area as we continue to have a less than full complement on the Planning Commission. I think we have an application in that could be supported by the majority of the board. And we could fulfill that Planning Commission docket. But we failed to have that nomination brought forward. Um. With that, I I do feel good about um this meeting. I think there's a lot of great dialogue and uh in in the very a very important matter. So, thank you.
All right, any further hands up? I don't see them. So. Oh, I do think that, um, I guess if I was gonna bring something up, it was it would be to piggyback on the comments about recusal. It probably would have been appropriate at the time when we ran that meeting that um there was a question whether Tim should recuse or not, and um, I think that probably the the proper answer would have been um to recuse. Um, just just you know, I've I've heard that comment made more than once and and I I I kind of felt that way, too. I think it'd have been a little bit better as far as our transparency. Um, probably if if that evening would have gone a little bit differently. Not to say the result wasn't good. It just that I think what Lisa did today was was the way it should be done in the future. Um, Tim, yes, go ahead.
I I'm quite sure I understand what you're referring to, Ben. And if you review the tapes, I, in fact, did recuse from the vote.
Yep, understood. Um, Brian?
Yeah, you know, um, I I think the concern and Mr. LaBelle brought that to us is a result of the process we happen to use them, which I think was a good process. Um, and that was the weighted weighted voting process. And so I think Mr. LaBelle's concern in that was that we're all involved in the waiting process, right? Which led us to the order in which we made um essentially nominations to vote on. And Tim, Tim did recuse himself from that. Um, so I I think we just need to be sensitive to that in the future that um, if if there's potential for conflict in that case, maybe the way it is not the way to go. Because we could have avoided it in retrospect. I don't think any of us intended the the waiting to create any kind of um nontransparency or unethical behavior because I'm I don't think that was the intent. Right? I mean, Tim did recuse himself from the vote when he needed to.
Yeah, yeah. I I think a lot of it was just the the methodology that we used and the fact that we hadn't really used that methodology before. Like, it was a little bit awkward, I thought. All right, any further hands? All right, so we move on to item eleven. This is going to be extended public comment. This will be restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. Um, I don't have the item in front of me where it shows how people can do that, but if somebody is on the phone and needs to be, it is star nine. Do we have anyone that would wish to speak in public comment? Jim Zalik?
I'm in the process of unmuteing him.
There we go, Jim. Almost unmuted.
Not not yet.
Not yet. You're still muted.
I'm unmuting you on this end, Jim, if you want to make sure your microphone is activated.
All right.
Here you go, Jim.
How about that?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, try to be a little more organized in my comments this time. First of all, I want to thank the board for the time and the great discussion. Uh, you certainly touched on a lot of the issues that that are near and dear to my heart. I would like to remind the board that the original moratorium, although it was for one hundred and twenty days, it did have an automatic sixty-day extension if necessary. So as far as something happened to be done in the next month, that is not the case. Um. Address the comment that although ordinance does spell out a a more specific pathway, uh, the reality is is uh depending on what I would have to be to because I can't just pave Lincoln Road and shape it in, it would have to be totally reconstructed. Uh, that and all the other requirements, uh, you're looking at easily over half a million dollars uh that I would have to invest before I could even turn a a stone. Um, I would call the uh board's attention to read the extraction activities definition carefully. Uh, I heard a lot of, well, that doesn't apply, that doesn't apply. It basically says, uh, and I'll try to paraphrase it. Uh, basically, it just refers to mining equipment, which in our case would have been an excavator and a loader. So it's nothing, there's no specialized. So any place you see an excavator and a loading operation is going to be contained under this ordinance as written, uh, which is which is our concern because that open that covers a wide area. Everyone has an idea what a mine is. Uh, and they might look at Hupshers or a quarry or that. Uh, that's not what the definition says. And as a contractor for the last forty years of my life, uh, I have to read and interpret what the contracts say. Uh, it's all fine as long as we're all laughing and no problems, but when it gets to be a problem, uh, then you're gonna look at the book and that's what the book says. And I'd encourage the board members to reread that carefully because that does this doesn't, it says extraction. And that means removing and placing of dirt. So um uh, I do take exception, uh, listening to Rodney talk about his perspective. It seems to be based on an ordinance that where he worked before. And uh, and yep, he had some good horror stories and yeah, we need to have it four hundred thousand dollars. But he didn't know how much it would cost for a bond, but a line of credit, if I were to go to the bank and get a line of credit, I have that takes four hundred thousand dollars out of my line that I can't access because so that is not just an incidental thing. Um, uh, so like I say, I heard a lot of things about a area far, far away and nothing that resemble resembles Union Township. Uh, there are contrary to again, what he represented, there are, I know of, three active sites where mining is going on right now. Now, you can ignore them. Uh, I'm not going to tell you where they're at because they're competitors of mine and I wouldn't do that. But I can tell you there are three sites that active that are actively keeping their to be able to be grandfathered in, you have to mine a little bit, maybe not a lot, but you do. So there are three sites. So the the representation, there are none. Again, I've lived here all my life. Rodney has only been here less than a year. Uh, so take but investigate for yourself. Uh, I built many roads. Uh, Brian raised a good question about the a a very specific example. Uh, what happens if you can get material? And and again, and where Rodney comes from, oh, you can't do that. You gotta have it from a gravel pit. BS. I built miles and miles of road, baseline being one of them, and we got a lot of the sand right there along the roadside. So that is a, again, where he came from, that may not be the case. Isabella County exactly road. And uh, so uh, again, I take exception to that. Um, and um before we started down this, I met with the road commission. Their concerns, no problem. They know our reputation. And if we need to grade it a little bit, all Pat would have had to do was said, I'll just call you and hey, the road needs grading and brined, and it would be taken care of.
Hey, Jim, gotta have you wrap it up real quick, bud.
Nope, that's it. Again, thanks for your time. I appreciate you taking and making some changes on it and uh wish, again, thank you very much for your time and I I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim. We have public open comment is still open at this time. Do we have anyone else that would like to bring forward public comments? Seeing now we close public comment. And we move on to managers' comments, item twelve. Mark?
Thank you. Just to uh, I plan on having the, hopefully, the Nottawa on the agenda next, at your next meeting. I mentioned we've been working on that. That's to run the sewer main from Nottawa down to the city sewage treatment plant. And then uh, just want to remind the board that following the motion to adjourn, I'm gonna immediately end the meeting on this virtual platform Zoom.
All right, at that, we open up final board member comment. Uh, Mark, you're done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, and let's see, I'm gonna just start with the first person to the right of me, which would be Clerk Cody.
That's probably because I raised my hand, maybe, huh?
No need to. I'll just gonna go through this sequentially.
Okay, um. I just wanted to make the comment that right now is the time to go paperless. So I think that us as a board should approve the, you know, the purchase of super or Surface Pros for all of the board members for board meetings. Instead of using ones that
I think we probably would need to have a quote on what that would cost or is this something you want to, maybe the board wants to direct management to um to investigate? Yeah, I think that going paperless is is where we should be. I mean, would it cost us to print and mail um, these packets for for all boards? It's got to be astronomical. Um. So I I think that we need to, you know, we can always, if we have people that like paper, then it's really easy just to print off what pages that you need.
Yeah.
But some of it's pretty useless. I mean, you know, if it's a hundred and eighty-page agenda, I mean, how much of it is really, do you really need to have in front of you? Um. So. Do we want to try to entertain that as a as a motion, Lisa?
I can.
I mean, I I think what we're just trying to do is is or does Mark just want direction to come back with head nods um that we would like to, you know, investigate the pricing of of having um, an electronic device, whether it's a notebook or Surface or whatever.
I mean, it's something we've all discussed in the past. I just think it's something that he should just do so we have for the next meeting or for, you know, shouldn't cost that much for seven of them. I mean, we're just getting basic Surface Pros, you know, we don't need them to do. But um I'll make a motion for Mark to first purchase what? I guess it'd be six Surface Pros because Treasurer already has one for the board members for board meetings or agendas, etc.
So we do have a motion. Do we want to second that? Or do we want to, again, would it be better just to have a quotation back of what it's going to cost and?
I will support that for discussion's sake.
Okay.
It but I agree. I'd like to see a quote. I I know roughly what we're looking at as far as costs. So, I mean, you're probably in the neighborhood of, um, you know, a thousand. It depends on the model. I don't think we have high requirements as far as speed or storage or memory. Um, we need something basic to that we can use our to go through our package, right? So you're probably looking at a thousand dollars or less, or maybe some incidental cost as far as setup. I'm just guessing here. Um, if that gives you kind of a ballpark, just ballpark a thousand dollars apiece. So that's
And there's and there's good options just as far as like notebook computers, too, I guess, right? And that's what I'm using.
Yeah, the the advantage of, right, the advantage of what Lisa suggested as far as a Surface is that you could essentially use, you know, email, Word, Excel, et cetera, on that because they it's a full functioning PC, right, versus like a tablet might be?
Yeah.
Um. And and that's certainly an option. I mean, maybe we look at whether or not we should be looking at uh something besides Surface Pro. I'm I'm certainly a supporter of that. I guess I wanted to bring up the discussion and and get a sense from the board. Not everybody's comfortable with technology, right? I mean, it took a lot to get us all into here and be successful, and I've I think we did great. Um, are are I haven't been in the discussions with the board before. Is there a consensus that that would be a good thing to have?
I think so.
And we got, you know, I I would say just go ahead and chime in, folks. I'm I'm not worried about people talking over each other on this item. Yeah, Tim.
Thank you. So at this point in our agenda, we're on final board comment. It seems fairly regularly we get to this point in motions are being made. I don't see this as an appropriate time for motions to be made. I think they should be proactively put on a agenda for discussion, action, discussion, whatever. But um I would not even support continuing on with this line of we got a motion on the table. It wasn't published for the public to see or for them to have common. It's just inappropriate from my perspective.
I'm I'm comfortable with a head nod that what would be our options and what would it cost? What would be our options and what would it cost?
We have a motion.
That would be, that'd be something we could talk about in our next meeting.
My motion, I just wanted to bring it up because people have asked, I'm just throwing it out there. That's my comment.
There you go.
Wanna agree with it, agree with it, it's okay.
And then, so what we're gonna do is, and, and, and Kim will get to you, I'm gonna get to you next anyway, cause you're next in line. So this would be your final board comment.
Okay, um, basically I just wanted to say, um, following up with Lisa's is. I've actually been wanting to get us on, you know, an electronic board for a while. But I mean, that's just my personal, um, choice. Um, but I also understand there's some that, you know, don't necessarily, um, know technology as much. And so I, I wouldn't mind seeing information on how much that would cost and how much it would save the township. Or maybe it'll cost more, you know, um. It, it's just a, you know. I, I, I would like to see the numbers personally, but, um. That's all I had to say about that part. Um, my final board comments, um, I just have a couple tonight. Obviously, the last board meeting, um, that we actually had, I mentioned I was going to MTA conference. That's not happening. They canceled it, obviously. So, um, Mark will not be doing. The, the payroll and that kind of thing. I'm still doing that. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that, just in case anybody had questions. Um, and the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, you know, I personally would like. The, the PC nominations, um, I know that's Ben, it's up to you to nominate and I completely understand that. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know that. I, I work with Connie Bills on the sidewalks and pathways committee. I think she's, you know, she's always, she always comes prepared. And I think she would be a great asset to the PC personally. And, and that because, I mean. Sidewalks and pathways are very important to all of us. But I also think she could be open minded as well and she, you know. She would allow for, you know, the. I'm trying to think of how to say it, sorry guys. She, you know, she would step back when she needed to step back kind of thing. If, if she felt it wasn't. A good idea for a sidewalk or pathway to be there, you know, she would step back. So, I don't know, I just, I wanted to throw that out there, so.
Thank you. Tim, you're next up.
Thanks Supervisor Gunning. Uh, it may get a little bit lost, but, um, since this twenty twenties upon us. Just wanna encourage everybody to, uh, fill out the paperwork. And, uh, get through that process. It's very important for the money that comes to our, uh, community, our state and as well as. Uh, seats in the legislative branch, I think it is. Um, also to each and every one of you and your families, just. Stay healthy physically and mentally. Good luck.
Yeah, so this, uh, time off has been, uh, good in some ways. Um, I've had a lot of opportunities, a lot of exercise and also a lot of, uh, opportunity to read. So tonight for my final board comments, I'd like to, uh, end it with a poem that I came across that I'd like to share with the board. Um, this poem was written by Kathleen O'Mara and was written in eighteen sixty-nine. And it was last reprinted, uh, in nineteen, during the, uh, the Spanish flu pandemic. Um, back in, uh, it was right after that, so it was nineteen nineteen when it was, when it was written. But here's what the poem says and, um, I think it has a lot of relevance to where we're at today. Um, and I want to leave this lead on a positive note. So he says. And people stayed at home and read books and listened and they rested. And they did exercises and made art and played and learned new ways of being. And stopped and listened more deeply. Someone meditated, someone prayed, someone met their shadow. And people began to think differently and people healed. And in the absence of people who lived in ignorant ways, dangerous, meaningless and heartless. The earth also began to heal. And when the danger ended and the people found themselves, they grieved for the dead and they made new choices. And dreamed of new visions and created new ways of living and completely healed the earth. Just as they will heal. Thank you.
Yeah, very well done.
Thank you.
Bill.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention what Norm said, everybody be safe and when this is all over with. We really need to support local businesses. There's a lot of people that I'm afraid aren't gonna be coming back. I talked to a few restaurant owners and. We're gonna see some restaurants that are closing. Let's just support local business once things get back to normal.
Brian.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna follow this too a little bit. I'll second, uh, th- thank you for the poem, Norm, by the way. Um, but I'll second what, what Bill said and, and you know, we do need to support restaurants is obviously a concern. Uh, because it's a natural gathering place, right? We, we gather meals together. Um, and I think our restaurants are gonna suffer even after this because life has changed. This is. Even when we're past the curve, et cetera, et cetera, life has changed. Um, but along those lines, you know, the, the state, uh, the federal government have taken a lot of steps to help those. Out of work, uh, student loan forgiveness. Various incentives for small businesses, um, e- even giving us each twelve hundred dollars, right? For to spend, to spend and put in the economy. Uh, my point with that is that. Uh, federal state levels are encouraging ways to support our communities. And I want to challenge this board to think about ways in which we as a township. Can offer that same kind of encouragement and support. Whether it be tax abatement for those in need because they've, you know, they've been unemployed. Um, and we give some forgiveness for at least a temporary time. Um, I don't know the answers to, 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 to this. But maybe there's ways we can help our own. And, uh, maybe, maybe over the next two weeks as we wait till our next meeting, we have an opportunity to have those discussions. We're in this together, right? So thank you. Uh, last comment, um, I'm supportive of Surface, Surface Pro or whatever it is. So Mark, just a nod that if you haven't heard it already, it's worth exploring. And, uh, that's certainly not as important as my first statement. So thank you Supervisor Gunning.
Well, I come from a household that has, owns two small businesses. I can, I can concur that it's, 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 it's really a scary time and. And unfortunately, a lot of these programs don't cover the, the real small guys like me. Um, you know, we're on our own and, uh, you know, it, it, it's scary. Um, you know, where do we go next? Um, you know, I mean, Mid Michigan Development Corporation has, has some grants and. You know, I'm crossing my fingers that, you know, with, that, that we, you know, might be lucky enough to get one. Um, but it's a scary time moving forward is, 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 you know, banks are still gonna wanna have, you know, their mortgage payments and. And, and utilities still wanna be paid. Um, and I like what Brian had said and I had mentioned something a while back is, is that what, what can we do? Um, to help our citizens. And I think there's ways that we can do it, obviously. But, you know, the hard part's gonna be, you know, what, when a guidelines, right? And then, then that's where, where it's gonna get tough. But, um, it was a really good meeting tonight. I think we had great conversation. I think that, um. Everyone came away with, with, I think, um. At least the thought that, that, that it was constructive and we were willing to listen, we're willing to work with them. Right? And I think that was important and, and I would encourage dialogue. Um, you know, with, with these people to make sure that, that, that they do have an ordinance that they're comfortable with also. And Clerk Cody, yes.
I wanna finish up my comment.
Yes, go ahead.
My comment. Okay, so candidates running to local office, you can now pay a hundred dollars instead of getting the. Twenty to forty signatures or in lieu of. Um, deadline for the paperwork is still April twenty-first, so you need to get that paperwork in. If you need to get something notarized, you can email me. Or call, you know, call the office, email Jennifer, email Mark. One of us will get you in here to get you notarized and get everything set up.
All right, thank you Lisa. And so at this point, we need to have a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye? All right.
Hold call, no?
And, and, and does that don't think we need to, do we?
All right.
Night, y'all.
Everyone stay safe and healthy.